Okay, good morning. Thank you for having Frank and I here so early this morning. So we will start by briefly reviewing the zoning ordinance update process. I will mention the goal for today's meeting. We will quickly review what zoning and subdivision ordinances actually do. For some context, talk about the varied history of the city's existing zoning and subdivision ordinances. And then we'll dig into the meat of the discussion, which is a review of the draft unified development ordinance, including noting major changes from the existing ordinances and diving into several specific topics that were in zoning phase three. And then we'll end with next steps. As most of you know, I view these presentations as a discussion. Please interrupt, ask questions, or add to the conversation at any time. Certainly, there will be times where I pause and ask direct questions, but feel free to So the zoning and subdivision ordinance update is progressing in roughly four phases. The first phase included an analysis of existing conditions, as well as a thorough examination of the existing subdivision and zoning ordinances. And at the end of that phase, we produced a diagnostic report, which is on the city's website. Phase two included creating the revised regulations. The major changes from your current code were fleshed out, and we concluded phase two in September of 23. And all of the phase two drafts were compiled into one document, and those are also on the city's website. Phase three began in January of this year. On January the 11th, we provided a phase three draft of all the proposed amendments in one document, which is also on the city's website. We ended phase three in April. We are currently in phase four, and on May 6th, we delivered the first edition of the phase four draft. And the phase four also includes the adoption process, which we will go over at the very end of this presentation. Our goal for today's meeting really is just a deep dive into the proposed unified development ordinance. We will be touching major changes and providing an overview of the major components of the zoning subdivision ordinances. In particular, we'll delve into zoning ordinance. If y'all excuse me, I'm having an allergy attack, so I'm not contagious. I just sound like I swallowed something. We will start with some background information to provide some context. Previously, we talked about exactly what zoning tools are and what they can do. I've mentioned that zoning is a blunt tool because of the limitations placed on it by both the state and the federal government, but also we can only find two standards very much. We can generally regulate law and use characteristics like lot width and lot area. We can dictate where building must go on the law using minimum and maximum setbacks. We can either regulate what a facade looks like to a certain degree by mandating a certain amount of transparency of windows. And we can dictate how long the building is, which we will talk about later on in the presentation. And we can also require vertical deviations, for example, of a building to break up mass. It is the interplay of all of these regulations that really do design a site and establish the character of a place. And so I ask you to keep that in mind as we're talking about all of these very minute details. It's those minute details that create place. Unlike zoning, which primarily controls the use of land, subdivision regulations primarily control the subdividing or dividing a parcel and construction of public improvements. So a new proposed subdivision enables communities to control and establish basically the permanent build pattern of their communities, which obviously for Fort Thomas was established a very long time ago, but you still do have some subdivisions. Subdivisions also provide a mechanism for reinforcing the zoning ordinance by requiring compliance with zoning standards such as minimum lot size, lot width, and lot management requirements. And the subdivision regulations are process and procedural oriented and extremely technical. And they contain engineering standards and drawings for constructing all of those public improvements within subdivisions. Your existing subdivision regulations were created in 1990, and no major updates have occurred since then. Because of that, basically, there have been so many changes in the engineering standards since 1990 that we are in the process, and as a result, in Article 7, most of the changes that we have made have been for those needed engineering modifications and a few changes to process. The existing zoning ordinance was adopted in 2012. It has been amended many times since, including amendments for the zoning map and the zoning text. The base of the zoning ordinance is a model ordinance that was adopted by many communities in northern Kentucky. We have retained large portions of that existing ordinance, but we have tried to tailor some of the development standards to the built environment in Fort Thomas, which did not occur in the ordinance was adopted in 2012. We are creating a UDO, or Unified Development Ordinance, with this update. And a UDO has both the subdivision and the zoning ordinance in one document. As we've seen today, Fort Thomas has two standalone ordinances, the zoning ordinance and the subdivision ordinance. And what we are doing is placing all of the document for a UDO for easy use. We're going to start with Article 1, which is the article that covers the administration of the UDO. Any questions about this background before I move on?
Is there any chance we can dim the lights on the edges of the TVs? We're not in perfect. Make a little bit more. Shut. Just a moment of reflection.
Lots of buttons have no action.
I don't think that works because Smalley still needs to replace that channel. I think it's on overall.
That's it. My answer is that. No.
So Article 1 of UDO includes, as I said, all the sections necessary to administer the combined zoning subdivision ordinance. We are not going to go through all of the sections in Article 1. We will spend a minute with the definitions and measurement section, and then we will spend more time with the powers and duties section, as well as the appeals and waiver sections. That doesn't mean if you have questions or concerns, we can't talk about them, but we have a limited amount of time and use of the sections that we purpose to sort it out. The definitions and measurement section defines the land uses and other key terms used throughout the UDO. Most definitions are new, and we have greatly expanded the definitions in order to add some clarity to the ordinance. Your existing definitions are antiquated, and they also only define a limited number of terms, which greatly hampers the administration of your current ordinance. In addition to the definitions, we have added a subsection that illustrates and describes some of the defined terms, and it also includes illustrations on how to measure the various standards in the ordinance, including setbacks and lot width. We've also added pictures throughout to help illustrate some of the standards, as well as some of the terms. And what you see on the screen are one illustration of a graphic that we created and then pictures that we think that we're using. Ninety-five percent of all the pictures that you see in the UDO are places in Fort Thomas. Section 1.3 includes the powers and duties of the zoning administrator, the city engineer, the planning commission, the tree commission, the design review board, and the board of council, which is what the ordinance calls the city council. The zoning administrator administers and enforces the UDO. We have retained the existing powers and duties that are currently spread throughout your existing ordinance and listed them all in section 1.3 instead of having it spread throughout the code. There are two new powers and duties included in the UDO. The first is to expressly authorize the zoning administrator to determine similar uses, and that happens when a use comes in that is not specifically listed. It gives the zoning administrator the opportunity and a process by which to declare them similar to an existing use. The zoning administrator is also given the authority to hear and decide on administrative modifications to some zoning standards. We will delve into that particular power further on in the waiver section of this The city engineer is mentioned in existing zoning ordinance in various sections with various duties. In the subsection, we compile all of the disparate duties in a one section, and essentially, the city engineer provides technical support to the city, which includes reviewing development plans. And that, in no additional use, I'll mark this up.
Can you turn this light off so there's not a glare on this TV screen? There was a big, huge glare on this. Is there anyone who can turn just this light off?
I don't think anyone can do that one.
Oh, thank you. That would help a lot.
I don't.
This is where we can see the back.
Well, it's on the city engineer. So that position being established, historically, we have a city engineer at any point. I was always asking about that. You didn't mention the person standing.
Yeah, so the city has a city consultant, which is in that one area. So for the city, through CTI, I'm from the city.
RGU?
So prior to me, it was Mark Bergman, who works at CT. So prior to CT, it was CDS. CDS was applied by CT, but CT, in essence, has been the city of years.
And the zoning ordinance today does mention various duties for the city engineer. There is just not even a current section that says, "These are all the officials that administer the code," or "These are all the boards and commissions that administer the code." They're just spread throughout. So what this section does is pull it all in one place, say, "These are the officials that administer the code, these are the boards and commissions, and these are their duties and powers." So essentially, there are no additional uses of powers coming from this. We are just saying, the city engineers mentioned, here it is, it's all in one place. As in the current ordinance, the planning commission evaluates development plans and subdivision plans, as well as providing recommendations to the city council on zoning amendments. Like in the existing zoning and subdivision ordinance, the planning commission is charged with considering waivers to the zoning and subdivision regulations. And the only new power is considering alternative equivalency reviews, which we will also delve into later in the presentation. The board of adjustment considers the appeals from the administrative decisions and various zoning areas and conditional use permits. And the board also considers changes to non-conform uses. For the most part, the board of adjustment actually does all of these outside through KRS 100, which is the state's legislation for the state of Kentucky. The design review board, or the DRB, retains its existing duties to review exterior alterations in Central Business District and the homes on Alexander Circle and Cochran Avenue. These duties currently reside in Chapter 36 of the city's Code of Ordinance says. The DRB also, under the current zoning ordinance, reviews signs within 100 feet of residential housing districts, and all of that is being retained. The role of the DRB is being greatly expanded through the zoning ordinance update. They are providing, will continue to provide the historical views in Central Business District. We are adding to that the Tower Park Historic Overland District, which we will also talk about later on. The DRB will also provide recommendations to the planning commission for the planning plans that are in Big Chews and Business Districts, which are such things as the Alexander Pike and Big Chews district that we talked about in February. They will be reviewing projects outside of the CBD, which is a new for the design review board, so that is a new power to be for them. In instances where a development plan is not required in the Business and Big Chews districts, the DRB will evaluate and act on exterior limitations. In that situation, where, for example, someone is changing a facade, a changing facade is not required, development plan, planning permission. Under this ordinance, it will require approval by the DRB.
Where were those powers before? That are now being given to the DRB?
So they didn't have, no one was reviewing design before on non-residential structures. The only thing that was being reviewed was compliance with the zoning ordinance to develop a plan review. So for example, someone could take a building and block in all the existing windows facing the street, and there would have been no ability for the planning commission to say no to that. So now there are standards in the code that say, for example, in Alexander Pike, you have to have a certain amount of windows or transparency on the front of your building facing Fort Thomas, facing Alexander Pike. And it would be the DRB's responsibility, assuming there's no site plan involved, to then review those exterior changes. So for example, if someone wanted to block all the windows for station, they would have to come in front of the top and ask for your approval to do that.
So if there was a site plan, it would be through the planning commission?
Correct. So what would be a two-step process in that situation? They would go to the design review board and get a recommendation, and then it would go to the planning commission for the final approval of the site plan. So it would be a two-step process in that situation.
Okay, so the overall process, you know, it's not being reviewed, as you're saying, from someone else, it gives the DRB, it didn't exist?
It did not exist before, correct.
And these are just recommendations? These are not?
So for, when there's a site plan involved, it is a recommendation.
And then the?
But if there is no site plan involved, they are acting upon design changes to the existing buildings.
Does a site plan need to be approved by anybody in the city?
So the site plan is approved solely by the planning commission. And then the next step, so let's take a step back for a second. Let's just talk about how the development plan process, development review process works. So let's assume there's a site plan. They would come in front of them. They would go to the design review board and get a recommendation for whatever design changes were happening to the building. They would provide a recommendation to the planning commission. The planning commission, assuming they approve it, the next step in the process is a building permit. So all the things that were on the development plan then have to be translated into the construction documents that then become a part of the building permit. What the city does at that point is make sure that the building permit documents align with what was in the development plan. Because occasionally, what happens is someone either intentionally or unintentionally changes the building, or changes the parking, and what happens in the building, the construction plan doesn't match the development plan. So the city then plays a role to make sure that all of those align. Then they file a building permit, they have a building permit, they construct. Once they construct, there's a final step in the process where the city says, "You have constructed everything according to your approved building development plan, and we are going to give you as particularly as other options as to go in compliance." So that's the development review process in a nutshell.
So you're saying it starts with DRB instead of a planning? If somebody wants to, has a site plan for each site, it would start with DRB instead of planning?
Yes, yes. Only for the example, if they are, for example, building a brand-new building, it would start with the DRB, potential review, the change.
Review the design, and then it's a good planning and zoning to say where is it located? Is it meant to setbacks and all of that?
Correct.
So it's only adding one month to the process?
Yes, it is. But it is now?
Three, because I figured you've got plenty of things first that refer to DRB and back to planning.
You don't need to. I mean, certainly, there are communities who certainly do that for whatever strange reasons, and they certainly don't have to. As we talked about, the process would start with DRB, provide the recommendation.
And it's just a recommendation? You don't, as if you're building something, you don't, the design review board can't tell you how you're going to do it, it's just their recommendation.
Correct. But again, I want you to know that, for example, if somebody is wanting to take an existing building, and they're not going to add to it, they're not going to change the parking, they're not going to change the use, anything that would affect the planning commission. They're just going to page, or block in windows, or add other various accomplishments to the building. That would be a situation where the design review board would have final authority to act.
And they only would ask for the DRB, not everything?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Can you repeat, what's the process?
The process to the council and the DRB, correct?
So in that situation, it would be to the board of appeals. Because, keep in mind, that the DRB is, excuse me, the board of adjustment. The DRB is wearing two hats under the new zoning ordinance. Their existing hat, that is for certain of appropriateness that comes in the chapter that it says remains, but then we are adding an additional hat for all of these designing view responsibilities that are outside of the district. So they will actually have two separate and distinct roles. You look like there's a question.
Well, I would get the impression that because the DRB was formed by the city that's not under KRS, that the appeals would come to the council.
So for the certain of appropriateness?
Just that.
Correct.
Why wouldn't it be for everything?
You certainly, you certainly could change it to be that way.
The board of appeals, this is a court of justice, you know, I would think as far as the, if somebody says that they want to do something that's a design review board, obviously, they'd agree, but, you know, the board of appeals probably wouldn't agree with the sign of the board.
But again, it would go to the board of adjustments, the board would go to the court.
Then after board of adjustment, they don't have anything, I would think it should come to the city council.
We certainly can track it.
I thought we put it in the ordinance that comes to the city council.
But again, we're talking about two separate and distinct roles for the certain of appropriateness, which is a historic role, then it comes to you under your new ordinance that you passed a year ago. But for the design review responsibilities, for example, in the neighborhood commercial office district, the Alexander Pike district, it would go to the board of adjustments first. But if you would, you would like for it to either A, come to you directly, or B, go to the board of adjustment if they're still not happy to come to you before this.
So the design review board is not under the board of adjustments, is what you're saying? The design review board is a subcategory of the board of adjustments?
No, just appeals to their decisions.
I like the way you just said it, yeah, after board of adjustment, then come here before it goes to the court.
Okay, we can do that.
I don't know, makes sense to me to give us an opportunity before it has to go to a court case, wouldn't that?
Yeah. Yeah, I'll work on.
But before it goes to court, it would just end at the city council?
Yeah.
Well, they would still go to?
They'd still go to court if they choose to do so. We can't stop them from that.
And the significance of it coming here is you'll have really, basically, an opportunity to review and do what you want with it, as opposed to when it goes to the court, it's going to be reviewed under appellate standards, they're going to be looking for errors on law, basically. So from a policy standpoint, if you want it before you, then definitely.
Yeah, we can do that. So let's also take a step back here. So where we are in phase four, this is what you received on the 6th, and you may have noticed the title said Edition 1. The changes that y'all have requested today, as well as anything that may come up in the joint meeting of the planning commission, I'll take all of those and then incorporate them into another edition of the phase four draft. So there is still time for all of these changes to be incorporated and come back to you.
One other comment about this process, if this adds another month, potentially adds another month to the development review process. Is it possible that the timing of the DRB meetings and planning and zoning meetings and board of adjustment meetings are such that somebody has a development, they go to DRB, and then the following week, they go to planning and zoning? Rather than it has to be a month in between?
You can always schedule special meetings if there's a rush.
Well, I was wondering if the timing of when the meetings are normally scheduled during a month?
DRB has the fourth week. Planning commission is the third, and board of adjustment is the second.
Board of adjustment is the fourth.
Board of adjustment and DRB are the fourth.
We've generally had success with that. We actually, in a couple cases, we took it before planning commission first, and then DRB and the planning commission would be per DRB, they would make an approval per DRB recommendations if there wasn't anything before out there. So we've had pretty good luck in not bogging things down with the way our meetings are set.
Okay, well, just keep that in mind.
Absolutely.
If there's, if any changes in this tend to add another month to the process, what we, all I'm saying is, let's move when the meetings occur in a month, just try to make it a little bit easier.
I also don't want to rush it, you know? I also don't want to feel that people are just forced to make a decision right away. I want people to have time to sit back and take their time to review a situation at hand, you know? It's not throw one thing this week, then the next week or two, make a rash decision as well. We try to rush it just for development. I have a couple of questions. This, it says evaluate and evaluate on the bottom two there, deviations of residential standards, modifications. What is their purpose? What can they do? Can they turn something from a two-story to a three-story? Can they bring it out to the front edge of the sidewalk, variances? What power do they have? They've completed how many?
Yeah, so basically, they are, and we'll talk a lot about waivers in just a few minutes. The situation where they are given the authority to have a waiver is only in specific instances within the code, so they do not have a broad authority to do things. And what we're talking about was to say the residential contextual standards. Those are things within certain zoning districts that govern how single-family homes look. If they can't meet those standards, or if they don't want to meet them, if they have a design that's unanticipated by the code, then they can go and find the design review board and say, "Perhaps I would like to do it this way." So it's all about design, but it's nothing about setback or height or any of those kinds of things.
Basically, maybe modern versus contemporary?
Or things like the amount of windows, or where the door faces, or those kinds of things.
Garage.
Right.
What's the process for residential outside those?
So if the person is complying with the residential contextual standards, then the process doesn't change at all. They file a building permit, Kevin and Mark evaluate it, they need it, then they get a building permit, and then you're fine. If they decide that they want to deviate in some way, then they go in front of the design review board. But assuming they meet those standards, they give the building permit, just like all of this.
Thank you.
No problem.
It's a lot for me, so, I appreciate you.
It is a lot.
I'm feeling lovely. It's a lot, I appreciate it.
This is a lot of material. In terms of the board of council or the city council, you will continue to consider and decide zoning map and zoning text, which is your protocol. Before we move on to the waivers and appeals, any other comments, questions, concerns about definitions and measurements and powers duties?
This is the design review board, the only one we're adjusting, are we going to get into any other boards that are, like, the planning commission or board of adjustments as well, too?
So as I just said in the last one, so the board of adjustments role doesn't change at all, for the most part. It is, for the most part, set by KRS 100. The planning commission's role is essentially the same, with the exception that they now have the authority to give equivalency, which we'll talk about in just a minute. So in many cases, the roles and responsibilities aren't changing dramatically in the ordinance.
What about city staff, are they getting incorporated as well, any powers you're going to give them?
So the zoning administrator's powers are currently throughout the entire ordinance, and they are brought together in the subsection in section 1.3. And the only two powers and duties that are changing, added to the zoning administrator are the ability to declare a similar use, a use that is undefined within the term similar. So for example, a use comes in that's completely not thought about, something that you pointed out that we know about today, like a co-working space. So five years ago, someone from WeWork had come into Kevin and said, "We want to do a co-working space." He would have had to completely turn it down because of all of the, or the ordinance has turned the structure. He would now be given the opportunity to say, "A WeWork space is similar to an office space, therefore, it is permitted." So that is a new power duty that the zoning administrator gets. The other one that he will get is an administrative modification, which we will talk about in depth in just a few minutes. All right, so we will move on to appeals, variances, waivers, and equivalency. There are two separate sections within the zoning ordinance, but they're interrelated, so I have related them in the page in this presentation. Section 7.1 clearly separates appeals from variances. The current zoning ordinance conflates both of these processes, which is confusing. Appeals are appeals from the decision of the zoning administrator, and variances are requests to deviate from the dimensional standards in the zoning ordinance. And that dimensional word is really important. KRS 100 only allows, if you would like to consider dimensions, to say a power. Both of these are heard about the board of adjustments. The existing process for variances is being retained, and any changes will all go to the board of adjustment. And as I said, KRS expressly authorizes the board of adjustment to grant variances. The existing zoning ordinance permits the The existing zoning ordinance permits the Planning Commission to waiver certain requirements, such as the parking within Central Business District, or the maximum building height in the professional office district. This new section expressly codifies this authority and provides a process on which to do so. Your current ordinance does do that. It just says they have the authority in certain instances. As I just said, a variance permits a deviation from a dimensional standard. So that's the difference between variance and a waiver. Like a lot of communities, Fort Thomas considers waivers because Paris sometimes is so limited the authority of the Board of Adjustment to grant dimension. It's only granted variances for dimensional requirements. Section 1.10 lays out the process on which the Planning Commission or whatever board is doing it can grant that waiver. As this slide indicates, there are three entities under the draft UDO that can grant a waiver. Those are the design review board, we touched on that just a second ago, the zoning administrator, and the Planning Commission. And we will overview the authority of each board separately. The Planning Commission may consider and grant waivers where specifically permitted to do so in the United Development Board Act. The Planning Commission cannot grant a waiver to all standards. For example, the ones that they can, what location of parking, situation. Some development standards do not maximum height. The only board that can grant a deviation from maximum height is the Board of Adjustment. And the Planning Commission has some authority to grant waivers to many, say, the district requirements. This chart was in the memo that you received in March, and it compares the Planning Commission's existing authority to the granting of waivers, the waivers provided from the UDO. In some cases, the Planning Commission is given a waiver above the UDO problems that currently aren't regulated in the current zoning ordinance, such as the amount of lot devoted to outdoor spaces themselves. In other cases, the Planning Commission is using some authority because they currently, as I said, have the ability to grant a waiver from that facility high in the professional office district, which they are not, when you have the ability to do it under the UDO. The ability to grant waivers helps the Planning Commission with the development of quality developed sites, which are impacted by all things, such as utilities, the location of existing points of ingress and egress, and the location of parking in buildings. And so the waivers really are used on the, sort of, experience in redevelopment, and are essentially already built out. The design review board may consider and grant waivers only where specifically authorized to do so in the ordinance. So again, it is not a blanket power. They have the ability to grant a waiver to the design review standards in the business and use districts. The board may also grant waivers to the residential contextual standards for single-family homes in the R1 and R2 districts, as well as the standards in Fort Thomas, which we're talking about in the ordinance. Please remember, as we talked about a minute ago, that the DRB is wearing two hats. They are wearing the hat where they look at things from the historic district that is established under chapter 36. And then they are having this authority to look at all of the non-essential districts and things like that. That's what we're talking about here in terms of the waiver authority. So the waiver that we're talking, authority that we're talking about is not in any way impacted, does not in any way impact the strategic appropriateness authority. This is only more than design standards that are, for example, the Outland Pike Use District.
So we, going back to in point three, the flexible administration, the municipal modification rule. So with regard to height, setback, and screening, zoning administrators can temporarily make a modification, correct?
Let me go to the next slide if you don't mind. So let's move on to the zoning administrator. The zoning administrator does have the ability to grant waivers from measurable and quantifiable standards. Per thought of a minor deviation results from an unintended error or unique conditions on property and will not violate the spirit of the ordinance. And again, as you just said, it is for 10% of any standard. So that could be heightened, that could be setback. This is the only place outside of the Board of Adjustment where height can be given, by the zoning administrator. And so that is a new authority that they not currently have now. And we just specifically had a question about that.
I just wanted to hear what you thought about this. It's not defined, it's coming out of...
So for example, an unmaterial or a unique condition on the site. So let's say there is a site that is heavily impacted by existing underground utilities. And so their building cannot spread out. It can't be, it can't occupy the site because of all of those underground utilities. So the zoning administrator may say, "Okay, in that situation, let's say the maximum height is four feet. We'll give you four additional." So that you can move your building around a little bit, increase the height a little bit, and deal with the situation of those underground utilities. So that would be a situation, if you have the unique circumstance. Same thing might happen depending upon the location of access on the site.
Do we all have to do it with existing conditions?
Correct. It has to be an unintended error or unique conditions. And so let's talk about the unintended error. When I sat in Kevin and Mark Schmols, there were times when things happened through the site development process that were unintended. So for example, they weren't able to get certain building materials, or the height of the C units was higher than they anticipated. And so you got down to the end of the project, and the height was one foot over what was permitted because of what happened with construction.
And the top of the C unit is the height of the top of the building?
There are some height exceptions within the code. So I was talking in that situation about what happened in that meeting. But in this situation, is there are some exceptions to height in your code, and one of them is HPC. But let's just say, for example, an unintended error would be that the surveyor or human error was determining the actual height, or when they graded by, that happens a lot, too. When they grade...
That happens, right. You've got the foundation in, you've built the buildings, you've got your... And all of a sudden, the grade is lower than when you anticipated, so now you're...
Yeah, so that would be an unintended error. So that would, at the end of, and that happens more than you can imagine in like thirty years of doing this. And then the building is built, can't be occupied before they go across the Board of Adjustment and get a variance for upfront. So in this particular case, they would be able, the zoning administrator would be able to get that variance.
Or bring in more walls.
Or bring in more walls, that happens, too. Yeah, so that is what is next by that. Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to...
I wanted everybody to hear it. It's not here, it's gonna be... There's a pushback.
I agree, I agree.
Completely not getting any of the photograph, thank God.
10% of the... Well, this is, is this presentation, can we put some upside at some point after? We can just, it's a presentation.
Full attention.
Couple of slides.
We usually do that every...
Yeah, it's an enormous amount of information, and I tried to pull on the slide.
I'm sorry, yeah, I do it.
Any other questions about the waivers and modifications?
One, so when you talk about the alternative local treatment, and this kind of plays into, if somebody getting a modification for something in a certain situation. Where it says that it is not, that something granted, it is not established precedent. Where if somebody got to do something, and then another person comes in six months later, "You did it." "They did." Well, I don't, you know, and I know that every, something's not gonna be maybe exact, but if it's, it's close enough to exact, I think it kind of does say a precedent, doesn't it?
So that's the next portion. So we, so far, we've talked about variances, which are only granted by the Board of Adjustment. We talked about waivers that are authorized by the Planning Commission, the zoning administrator, and the design review board, and then the final thing is the equivalency provision. And what it does is it allows the applicant to propose an equivalent method of meeting a zoning ordinance standard. And it really does, the idea behind equivalency is allow the applicant to satisfy the standard in a way that was unanticipated by the code. So in other words, someone is making creatively about what is the intent behind these standards. And in answer to your question, an equivalency provision reviewed by the Planning Commission, the Planning Commission is the only one that has this authority, really has to be extremely fact-specific. And it has to, and when the Planning Commission is making certain informations, it has to be so fact-specific that it really isn't setting a precedent. So they have to say, you just can't blanket, they give it, they have to say. And the burden of proof is all on the applicant. The applicant has to say, "Your standard is X, and I'm meeting it with Y, and this is why it's equivalent." And the Planning Commission has to agree with that and establish that in the record. And so one of the things that this ordinance does that's different from your current procedures is it really does put a burden of proof on the Planning Commission to make its decisions and to have the record state why. And that's very important in terms of equivalency provision.
So in a case you're gonna, I was gonna say, if standard is X, you're not changing the standard, you still have to meet that. So why is just, you're saying the method that you take to meet the current standard?
Correct, correct.
Can you give an example of that?
So it happens a lot with landscaping and screening. So for example, you have a change in topography, and you need to have a buffer that is X feet wide, 12 feet wide. They can't meet that because of the issues with topography. And they come back and say, "We're going to do landscaping," or "We're going to move the building," or "We're going to use some other design standard to meet that upper and screening requirement." And this gives the Planning Commission the opportunity to do that. They do not, again, like the waivers, do not have the ability to grant equivalency for everything. It's for the environmental regulations, which are patrick and full-size regulations, the landscaping and screening, the conditional use and restricted use regulations, and the off-site parking and loading access regulations. Equivalency happens once a decade. But again, it's helpful for those situations where an existing site, either because of the improvements that are on the side, or because of topography, the applicant provides another way of meeting the intent behind the standard. But it really, and this section does lay out a process on which the Planning Commission grants them.
Is there a restriction on that? The exception, could it only go so far, or move so much, or vary so much?
No, it is not, as it's currently drafted. It does give the Planning Commission latitude to think of all kinds of alternative solutions to deal with it. In some cases, one, one day, thinking of, you know, where the building was placed on the lot, provided, and the lack of landscaping, the lack of windows, and various other things, provided that buffer between residential. And the Planning Commission, not particularly communes, that that makes sense, they need to change the topography and the depth and all of these things. So no, there is no, you can't vary more than this much, or you can only make it equivalent in that way. Because the standards on which are in these four sections are so varied, that it would be difficult to put any sort of limitation. If you have concern about the equivalency provision, you can certainly take it out. You can certainly constrain where it can be used. But I think it is helpful in certain circumstances. So before we move on to the next section, anything else that you want to talk about in terms of those three buckets? Or four buckets, actually. But specifically, variance, waivers, and equivalence.
We're gonna circle back around to everything at hand, right?
No, this is a hundred and forty slides. So we're not circling back. I mean, you're always welcome to talk about anything. And the schedule is not set in CNN.
So wait, wait, so my understanding is, right now, that, I'm sorry, is that every time we go through here, we're making decisions at this moment for you to change things? Or we're accepting things as they go on? Because I thought this was a presentation that we're discussing. Because I'm only asking questions as if I'm trying to understand what you're presenting to us, it's not as if that that's not what I'd like, what I would like to see. So what are you asking us to do?
It's a combination of both. I mean, you, like you have already said to me, I want to change the appeals process for design review, because that would be changed. If you are asking questions because you're concerned, or you have a question, we certainly will answer those. And if, you know, two weeks from now, or we get back to the Planning Commission, you said, "I thought about this, I'll put it in the code tomorrow, I'll make changes." Nothing is set in scene at the right now. That was my point, saying that there's going to be another edition of this Page Four draft. So it's an opportunity for you both to hear things and to make direction about changes. Does that make sense?
Yes, I just remember the impression that this was a presentation, and we're asking questions, it's some questions I haven't asked, just to make sure that the audience or anyone listening, I don't know if we're not live, but are taking, if that understands what you're presenting to us. I did not understand the fact that we are here to also give our opinions on how we should forward at this particular time. So that changes my thought process. I don't know if anybody else has the same thing, but I have no idea that that was the case. It's not necessarily this presentation evaluated here.
Yeah, that's, maybe tell me, maybe tell me a little briefing, we're looking for your feedback, so.
I know, I mean, we just, I think some of these changes, we need to discuss as a whole, right? There's six of us here, we don't have a vote, just because I suggest something doesn't mean it should be changed. We should all be discussing it together, seeing if we agree with that change, make sure that when it comes down to the final action, that we're all on the same page, so that there's no reason to delay when it comes down to the next act. But that's the reason I'm discussing that, you know what I mean? Because I don't want anybody confused, just because I mentioned something, doesn't mean it's set in stone, so it's...
Well, we kind of already said that when we talked about going from Board of Adjustment to the councilors and to the Board of Appeals.
So has everybody been okay with all the variances and agreements in for the, for the position then?
Well, I can't, you know, if we have time to get there.
Yes, exactly.
We're not, you know, we're not...
It's kind of step one in the process of understanding things, so we can decide what we want to make. But this is a good opportunity for us to, if anything hits a bar, I might relate and discuss it, so it doesn't get kicked down the road, because that definitely has stages to it, that can be built off something that we don't agree with, right? So farther it gets along, I don't want to delay this process or cost us any more time or money, so.
Yeah, so we're discussing something like the DRB. Just as a, as a counsel, your silence, I'm assuming that means you're, at this moment, you're okay with it? You can all talk about that later. But like the DRB, I'm assuming that everybody agrees, right? Yeah, yeah. By all means, if you disagree with that, because it's a good thing, just to disagree for us to get more information for a whole group or anything, so don't, don't...
And I'll, I'm just like, I'm assuming, maybe for the first time, I read it in this, but as I said before, this is Spanish to me. So you know what I mean, so I'm trying to understand, and so I may come back later with that.
So talk about it, we continue to talk about it.
Yeah, I know, but I don't, there's so much information, we can forget it later.
Could you talk a little bit about the allowing through equivalency? Can you give a position, just use the kind of, the type of use to be allowed when maybe it was...
So the equivalency, if you all will be with that slide.
Oh, thank you, thank you, that's important.
So equivalency is not for use, at all. It is only for those particular sections. So for example, for a brew pub, that is a restricted use in Central Districts District. And 50% of it, a restricted use standard for the brew pub, 50% of it has to be a restaurant.
That's high. It says in line that it is included.
It's included from the standpoint that the specific restrictions, they may, they can provide a...
Under the...
Under those uses, but the uses themselves
Not to change the use, but...
can never be changed. In Kentucky, unlike other states, once a use is listed as either permitted or conditional, it can only be changed if the zoning ordinance has changed. So the only thing that the equivalency can be used for is one of those particular restrictions, whether it's a restricted use or conditional use. But the use itself...
So there wouldn't be any for permitted?
Correct. Yeah, so it... But again, just whether the use is permitted, it still has to meet the standards in the code. So for example, it could be a permitted use, but still need to have an equivalency for a landscaping buffer standard. Or for where the dumpster is located on the side, or those kinds of things. But the use in and of itself is one of the few things that is firmly set in this ordinance. It is set as permitted, it is set as conditional, and the all, and we'll talk about this a little bit more in just a second. The only wiggle room is a little bit with the restricted use, and we'll talk about that in just a second. But there is no equivalency for use.
Is everybody content with everything thus far? Is everybody content with everything thus far? As far as the conversation goes, I'm still a little, I'm sure I'm excited to be coordinating the adjustments, I'd like to understand this a little bit more, what you find means that you can jump into this.
And so we'll come back together in June and continue this conversation. So this will give, again, a month from now, we'll have an opportunity to say, you talked about X and Y in May, I'll talk about that before. So that meeting will have, we will certainly have a slide deck that has some prescribed conversation, but that is the opportunity to continue this discussion more, for things that you think about between now and then.
As I'm learning this process, I'm starting to figure out a way for me to, for how to understand it better and how to better come to be more prepared. If we could get this along with something like this prior, then I know what order you're going to go in, so I can go slide by slide and understand or have questions written out ahead of time, so for the next meeting. And I would like also, for the next meeting, to review anything we discussed, that we've had questions on, for a chance to, you know, to take, to give them to the actual question, so they can address that one flat time, if that makes sense. That just helps me, I don't know if anybody else, but I'd like to view what I have.
So let me make sure I understand, so you were slide deck.
I just would like this, so that I, so that I can, because this breaks it down and gives that definition, but this breaks it down in the order it's going to go in. So for me, instead of bouncing around this, I can, I could be slide per slide with any notes that I've taken, so I'm a little more organized and I can streamline the process a little better with my questions.
Yes, so in terms of the written material, I wasn't clear on what you were asking for in addition to the slide deck.
The, just the same thing.
Oh, okay.
The same thing, because this defines everything that's in the slides, just not in the order necessarily.
Right, okay.
So.
That's in a second.
If that was your point now.
Yeah, yes, yeah, exactly.
Sorry. So I thought this was great, this is the best thing I've seen so far. I'm just, this is how I, this helps me personally.
So that's the meeting that you're referencing on June 19th, is that the June 5th?
Yes, it is. So we will move on to Article 40, which includes these individual zoning districts. On the screen, there are all of the residential zoning districts, all of the existing residential zoning districts were retained in the zoning ordinance update, and there are currently five. There is one two-family district and the two multi-family districts. There is one additional single-family district, which is the R1B and the R1C district, which we'll discuss in depth shortly. We also have, what's on the screen now is the business and mixed-use district, which includes the central business district and the corresponding sub-zoning districts. The traditional business district, which is the zoning district for Inverness, the Alexandria Heights mixed-use district, and the neighborhood commercial office district. There are two other districts that are considered standard districts, and that is the preservation district, which runs along Mary Ingalls Highway and the conservation district. And we won't be talking about the local preservation or conservation district at all during this presentation.
So back up that last screen real quick, just to understand this, please. These are all sub-districts, so they're their own zones.
So they are, they're all the central business district.
So they're all part of the central business?
They all fall under the central business district, but they are sub-zoning districts. And that happened as a result of our meeting back in June of last year, where we talked about the central business district, both for downtown, or as it's called in the Planning documents town center, and Midway, is all one zone today, and it fails to account for those different uses that are in those areas, as well as for the different built environments. So they are all the central business district, but they are subzones within it that are differentiated by both use and development standards. And I know that that is somewhat confusing, but it was a way to keep the central business district zoning, but I cannot afford those different things. So let's chase a rabbit for a second. Why is it important to keep the central business district zoning? So in 2002, you created a local historic district for the central business district in Chapter 46, and we'll talk about this more in a minute. But that district said, that chapter says, in order for it to be in the local historic district, it has to be zoned central business district. It has to have that zoning. And if it doesn't have that zoning, it is not in the historic district. So in order to keep your historic districts intact, we had to keep them all zoned in some way, central businesses. So that also is part of the reason as to why all of those subs zones had to be created based on the goal that you wanted to differentiate both development standards and uses. So again, that's a complicated rabbit to chase, but that is why we ended up there, partly why we ended up there.
In other cities, is this pretty common, or is this more often?
The sub-zoning districts?
Yes.
They are, they are becoming more common, yes. Because as I said when we started this presentation, zoning is a blunt tool, and it has created many communities that, created built environments in many communities that aren't desired by those communities. So how do you take that tool and tailor it and make it more refined? And a way to do that is through using sub-zoning districts. And then we have four special districts that are created under the UDO. They are all overlay districts. The residential cluster overlay district is your existing overlay district, exactly. These, for example, for the homes on Alexander Street and Concord Avenue. The other ones are new, and they include the Ford Thomas Avenue overlay district that we were talking about in a minute, and they're two historic districts. The central business historic overlay district and Tower Park historic overlay district. Overlay districts are a special type of zoning districts that's used for by additional requirements on top of the existing zoning. Sometimes they are used to differentiate uses, other times they are used to change development So in terms of the general revision to your zoning districts, we have created broad generic land use categories that say things like retail establishments instead of antique shop and apparel shop. We have utilized and incorporated contemporary land uses, which include things like co-working spaces and experiential retail, which are retail spaces where you supply and pay a price, that's experiential retail. All of those have been baked into your non-residential districts. We have intent statements for all of your zoning districts, which will tell the why, why, what the intent of those districts are. And in addition to permitted uses and conditional uses, we are utilizing restricted uses, which as this diagram shows, falls between permitted and conditional. And a restricted use is a use that is permitted by rights, provided it complies with all of the specific use regulations that are contained in Section 534. Section 534 is a new section for your code that lists initiative standards for these restricted uses. If a use can't comply with those specific standards, because those specific standards are specifically geared to make that use appropriate in that district, if they can't meet them, then the proposed use becomes a conditional use. And by doing that, we are then putting an extra layer of review on that use and making it go in front of the Board of Judgment. So we are using restricted uses, which is one of who are being approved.
I see your question, but I'm not specific here, and how it plays into the current trends of, we talked about this a little bit, but I think it has to do with some of these restricted and conditional uses too, but just as an example, we, I've talked to a few people living, the homes more or less from like a Green Line down to a fifth or a back, right? That there's some differences there, there's some residential upstairs, you know, for a long time. How are they zoned currently? And if somebody, they want to have this remaining or they're paying the residential, is that, how does that look under the current trends?
So under your current zoning?
Well, I'm sorry, under what we're talking about?
Okay.
Yes.
So under what we're talking about, and we'll actually talk about that in depth in just a minute.
If you want to leave that, so.
Do you mind?
No, I don't want to, I'm, yeah.
Okay, and if I don't answer that question, just yell at me. So we're going to start with the single-family and the two-family districts. As I've said, there are five single-family districts in your current zoning code, and one two-family district, all of which are being retained. We are creating one new single-family district that has two sub-zoning districts. And in that particular case, we are creating that because of the unique lot characteristics in that area. As I mentioned in the background section, the existing zone, the single-family districts, were not tailored to your existing built environment, largely due to the result of that model code that we choose. Consequently, the current development standards, which are standards like setbacks, don't reflect where homes are situated on lots today. And what we see on the screen are the changes that we made to your existing development standards, specifically to reducing the R1B and the R1C, the minimum side setbacks and the minimum rear setbacks. And again, that is in order to deal with your existing built environment. After reviewing all of your past variants, is that's where they came up with those numbers. This change bears this home number stream best in the properties, since your own homeowners will have to give a variance in order to add on. But please know that you have homes that are situated in some situations two feet from the sidewalk line. As you can see, there's still one new variance. So we are reducing the number of variances, but we are not eliminating them. And that was a conscious policy choice by the planning commission, because they felt like, if you get any closer to the sidewalk on than five feet in most situations, you need to go for a Board of Judgment. And so that is where that came from.
No question, I don't know, I have a couple of questions. I do like the adjustments for people to be able to build out a few things with these side variances, I think that's something.
Great. My question, one question is, what is two and a half stories? What's that half story?
So, can you wait five minutes?
I can wait five minutes. And then, when we were looking at the size setbacks here, I realized we adjusted in C and B. And I can see why we didn't adjust them in the larger lots, because people want space, right? You know what I mean? Why not the adjustment in D or A?
Because both of those lots, if you look at the number, the variances that you granted in the past, and you look at where those are matched, it just did not seem to be necessary. The lots are larger, the homes are temporary.
So they have room to do what they need to do without, in governing, okay.
Now, again, that doesn't mean that at some point in time, some houses are zoning R1D, and it, you know, it's older home, and it might not, it might be a variance. But again, we are attempting to deal with your existing, really observing these variances.
They have room inside to get what they want, right?
And the current height standards are your existing standards. So what's shown on the screen is where we made changes, and you can see it with the stripe out and the underline and the bold. So 35 feet or two and a half stories is your current.
Would you be listing out any zoning changes that we made from one zone to another? Is that happening during this process at all?
You mean in the past or right now?
Right now.
Um, it's, yes, but not, we are not changing the zoning for single-family at all.
Well, I'm sorry, yeah, speaking of maybe commercial or residential, residential, commercial, R1A, A, the R1A, is there any changes that are being made on the map itself?
So, with rare exception, I don't want to say completely, with rare exception, if you have an R1 zoning today, you will have an R1 zoning at the end of this. All of those are not changing. The only changes that are happening are, for the most part, in the non-residential district. And yes, we will be going through all of those. As I said, we did create the R1 Town Center District with two sub-zoning districts, and this is the southern district. And we broke into those sub-zoning districts because of the unique lot characteristics for those lots located between Haberdor and Romley Miller and North Charlotte. As you can see, the little lot area for the R1TC2 is 3,400 square feet, and the minimum lot width is 45 feet. In the minimum lot area for the R1TC2 is 5,600 square feet. Both of those are dramatically smaller than any other existing zoning districts, which does recognize the uniqueness of the lots and the homes in this case. The current zoning ordinance and UDO require minimum front setbacks in the residential districts, which is either a defined minimum that you saw on that chart just a moment ago, or it is derived from the average setback of the homes within 300 feet.
Can you go back to the last one? I was trying to find this, the two new, are these the two new ones? Is that what you're talking about on the next slide?
Um, no, we moved on to another topic.
Okay, so these are two new ones here.
Right.
And where are they located throughout the city?
They are only located right there. So they are.
Okay.
That is it, it's just those.
I was trying to find it on there, I'm sorry.
Yes, they're bound in. And I realize when I.
This is the one we tried to make in four minutes, right? Behind, from there, okay.
And if you will notice, there's a mistake on the map, which we fixed when, when we did the next version of it, because it's not Miller's way, Miller way. So, but yes, that's where it is.
Those do.
I'm sorry?
I was trying to look at this. I was, I was like, man, I know, oh.
That is impossible, that is impossible. So keep in mind, so let's, let's do talk about that for a second. So what we have provided to you, both in the digital version and in that tiny little version, is a paper map, right? And so that will be a part of what we give to you at the end of this process. Another part of it is our GIS, or Geographic Information Systems person, has created digital files that will be then given to PDS, so that's, and he has had conversations with PDS, to then load all of this onto the GIS system. So you will have both the paper version as well as the digital version.
As well as the PDF that you can zoom.
Yes, yeah, and all the PDF that you can, you know, zoom into all of those. Adam, do you have any questions about the other one?
No, that's perfect, thank you, I'm sorry.
No, please.
So now, I was trying to find it on this and.
That's sort of a whole standard of this discussion, is interrupt and ask questions and try to figure out what we're talking about. The current zoning ordinance and UDO require a minimum front setback in all of residential districts that I just said, which is either a defined minimum that you saw on that chart, or it's derived from the average setback of the homes within 300 feet. This is the only place in your current ordinance where the ordinance recognizes that 90% of your homes in your smaller districts totally are required for a setback. And it's a good provision, there's absolutely nothing wrong with it, it has been retained virtually word for word from your existing ordinance. However, when you establish a minimum setback, what that means is the home has to be at or behind the minimum. But it doesn't tell you where on the law it actually has to be. And so what happens is, if someone constructs behind that minimum setback, it can disrupt and the flow and rhythm of homes as you're walking or driving down the street. And that noticeable, when you place that, it becomes noticeable and it becomes different. And as a result of that, and to control that, the planning commission talked about adding a maximum front setback in the R1B and the R1C districts only. And when you have a maximum front setback, it prevents a home from being located too far back on the lot. We chose those district, because those are your two most compact single-family districts. So with a maximum and a minimum front setback, the single-family detached dwelling must be built, with a maximum and a minimum, just like you see in the draft, and the draft is from the new code. And it does strictly regulate the placement of homes on the lot. So what I've said in all of those words is, we are now in those two districts controlling where you can build a home. We also modify the permitted uses in the R1B, the R1C.
That was I, I was going to ask, when you said permitting, it also restricts if you, somebody that's a developer coming to you finding everything, including connecting townhomes over there.
Yes, and, but that is actually controlled through the uses.
Yeah.
All of this is assuming that the use conforms as a single-family home, and then we're controlling where the home goes on. But again, the code deals with uses and standards, and a townhome would be able to break use in a single family.
Thank you. Thank you.
So within the districts that you see on the screen, we have changed and made two family dwellings restricted uses. In all of those zoning districts, there are two family homes today that exist as nonconforming uses, which greatly diminishes the ability to, for example, get a mortgage or those kinds of things. So what this change does is legitimize existing two family dwellings, but does not allow the construction of any new ones. And it does that by saying, if you exist as a two family dwelling the day the ordinance is passed, then you are a conforming use. And by phrasing it that way, as I just said, those become conforming, but a home cannot, can't be torn down and built, a two family built, and you can't take an existing home and then turn it into a two family. All it does is say, if you exist today, you are allowed to be a conforming use. And so again, that's an example of a restricted use.
So does it better than being a two family?
It is much better than being a two family, because, you know, as I said, getting a mortgage can sometimes be changed.
If you're an existing two family, you're in conformity the day the ordinance passes, you're not, if somebody were tearing them down, they'll say you cannot build a two family.
Well, that's a policy choice. As it's currently drafted, you could not. If you wanted to allow someone to put a two family back, then we would need to phrase that restriction differently.
Why wouldn't we allow for it to be?
If it burns down, something happened, you know, it'll probably affect what it was.
Yes, yes.
But not intentionally.
But, no, not that. So for example, you had a tornado, and all of the two families that were on the front of the one, Lundy, are taken out. As long as they're rebuilt, and it's unintentional, they could be, they could be built. But if they tore it down intentionally, it would have to come back to a single family home. So the policy question that Andy's raised is, do you want, if it's, you know, someone, if someone wanted to, for example, say something, it was neglected over time, and it was going to be difficult to repair that two family, and someone said, you know, what, I want to tear it down and just build a new one, do you want to do that? Yes.
You know, I brought this up a long time ago about incentive programs, if someone wants to take a two family and put it back, what, you know what I mean? Because there's a lot of cost involved. Yeah, I think it's something that we, talk about this, and maybe something we want to try to incentivize, or about other cities doing this before. Now, what was the other one? It's like you said, they put five hundred thousand dollars into it, they get a break for like five years or seven years on it. Invest what they have to turn it back into, whether it's a whole lot, you know.
We had a, we always have an application for that this week.
A two family to build a one family?
That happens, just because, the reason I know about these is to tell them that they go, correct me if I'm wrong, if they chain the two family into a one family, they can't go back. So if they ever do that, they cannot go back the other way. So that's why it's pretty annoying to let them know if that's what they want to do this time.
If it's a single family zone, no, obviously during a R2 or a R3, you know, go back with that, but in a single family.
So in R2, you are allowed to build a two family?
Correct. But you don't have that many R2s? You have some, but you're not gonna make.
Where are they?
They're just sporadic throughout the city.
How many two family are in the R1B and R1C?
Oh, so for example, on Miller and Lundy, the first two or three lots are off, are all duplexes. On Highlands, just south of One Highland, there are two duplexes, I think off the top of my head. And then on the other side of Lundy, you know, not, not we created the R1C, there are two or three. I mean, there are more two families around than you realize.
Out of the almost sixty-seven hundred residential units that we have in the town, one hundred and seventy-three are two family, from PDS notes from last year.
Two family?
Two family is one hundred and seventy-three, three family is twenty-two, and it doesn't include apartments and condos and stuff, but just...
You know, I wonder if we look at the difference between, say, a nineteen forties house that was originally built as a single family, but converted to a two family, a two-story, versus a nineteen sixty, obviously built as a two family, treat them different, that, and I don't know, just bring it up.
That would be difficult to do. Many of your two families were actually constructed as two families, because you can tell that from looking at the, at the files. In some cases, it's hard to tell from the front as to whether or not they were a two-story home that got converted to duplex at some point. But many of your existing two families that are nonconforming today were built as a two family, just by the fact of two front doors and two entrances from, from the sidewalk. But there are some, as you said, that you wonder, like, was that really a two family or did they convert it at some point?
So that would be too hard to...
That would be very hard to differentiate in that sense. But Andy's question is still standing out there, which is, y'all all seem okay to legitimize the ones that exist today. But what happens if someone wants to tear it down, for whatever reason, and put a new one? Do we permit that? And we don't have to answer that question today, because that is a large policy choice. But it's not what we discussed.
Does the Plan, the Planning and Zoning folks have recommended to not do that?
So in their minds, the goal was legitimize what's there, because that was part of the goal of the whole update, right? Whether you're talking about uses or you're talking about setbacks, respect our existing built environment. So truthfully, we have not had that discussion about whether or not if it's torn down, though, it should come back up. So that could be added to a list of topics for the meeting that you, y'all are right.
I think that's something we should, sure, it's in the book.
What, can you, let's say you have a two family, and the two families that, a lot of them never built as two families in the sixties, are, each floor is probably between a thousand and twelve hundred feet. Can you, with this, or now, add on to the back where you're making a little bigger floor?
So if it's currently drafted, no. But we could do that as well.
That's an interesting thought. Say that again, making it more marketable.
Yeah, because, yeah, all the two families that were built in the sixties, each floor is, I'm gonna guess and say between a thousand and twelve hundred feet, and they have two bedrooms, one bath. That's what they all are. So they're not really, it's not as nice for a young family to move into as it would be if you had eighteen hundred square feet, which would mean an addition to... Yeah, I don't think they are. If you're only talking about a hundred, that's fine.
Well, I think families are moving into them regardless, right? And living how they are and probably trying to get a new system. You know, where there's a lot of value in how the building looks, and you can stay on that, it's cool.
So, yeah, and we'll add that to discussion. But what I would say is, we have added through this update, design standards that don't currently exist, whether it's in your, for some of your single family, and for all of your non-residential. And we're gonna talk about that in just a few minutes. But the other thing that we could say is, if you wanted to permit existing two families to expand, we could add design standards to those, or we could say it has to be in the rear, conforming the setback. I mean, there are ways of preserving from the public right of way, from the public ground, that the house continues, or the duplex continues to look the same. So while I talk about zoning being a blunt tool, there are some ways that we can mitigate some of those concerns about design if you decide you want to go that route.
Are they able to add on?
No, because they're nonconforming use in all situations.
But Andy's question is, if we move forward, do we allow the homeowner to, the property to do whatever the property, as long as it falls into the, the other qualifications?
Some way, yes. I mean, he, they, I think, what you're trying to say is, for example, if you legitimize the two families that are out there, you're saying, you know, as long as they can meet setbacks, they could add on to the back, or whatever else, which they certainly can't do now. And as it's currently drafted, it's unclear. And part of, part of this process is, we want to add as much, we want to diminish as much uncleareness and ambiguity as possible from this ordinance. And so...
So what we treat as two family different than a single family, when it comes to adding on?
Because it's a nonconforming use today.
Correct. Moving forward.
Moving forward, the idea was, again, as the Planning Commission talked about, just legitimizing what's out there, not necessarily adding on to it.
Once it's legitimized, once the two family is legitimized as a new family, it's admitted, why would we treat that different than a single family? Or, it's not...
Because again, there, it's sort of a...
The right zone.
It's in the right, it's a way to legitimize it, but not expand it, right? So we want to allow people to get mortgages, and it's like they can invest in the existing built envelope on their property, but inherently, it's a two family and a single family, and do you really want them to expand that? That's a policy choice.
Right, in a single family.
In a single family zone, because again, these are all single family zones.
Would we take all two, current two families, registered two families, and create a zone for them, or are they all going to follow the single family zone?
So as it's currently drafted, and again, keep in mind, these are sporadic, like here, like I said, here are like two just south of One Highland, with a three family and then single families all around them. So it would be very difficult to just walk down and say, make all of those R2. And when you do that, you do two things. You create a spot zone, which is difficult to legitimize, and two, you are saying that forever, we want a two family on that lot.
Okay.
And what, what we're saying now is, we believe, as it's currently drafted, we believe that these should be single family neighborhoods, that the predominant use should be single family homes. But we understand that these two families have existed for a very long time, and we want people to continue to invest in them. So we want to legitimize the building envelope and the use as it exists today. And so the question that Andy's raised is two things. One, should they be able to tear it down and put a new one up because it's deteriorated or whatever, for whatever reason? Or two, increase the building envelope to make them more marketable. So those are two policy questions that we can talk about with the Planning Commission issue.
Let me ask a related question. Aren't there a lot of four family in town?
There are more three families than four families, as, based on, and that's all Andy told, what I'm saying to you.
Okay. I'm thinking of, on the avenue when you make the bend, aren't there a bunch of, hey, all two, three, four, one, two, three?
Yes, but all of those are under R2.
Does anybody know if any of, oh, okay. Does anybody know if anybody's converted those into two families by connecting the two floors together? I mean, there is townhomes, or...
Somebody did that next to Moyer.
Okay, they converted it back to, they took a four family and made a two and three bedroom house, correct?
Well, two, I don't know the number of bedrooms, but they, four family on the corner of James, on the west side, northwest side, that was converted from a four family to a two.
Cool. Because that, I mean, that building...
Essentially, it's becoming, the idea is, it's becoming more conforming, because it's a single family zone. You go from four to two, it's more conforming than it was before.
Well, and I guess my point is, I like the fact that, because now it's more marketable, it's reduced the number of units in that building. But I understand what you're saying, Andy, is, if someone with a two family, can, can you make it a one family? Probably not as easily as you could expand and make it a two.
It'd be nicer.
Yeah.
And you know, what I look at this, is, is still on a lifelong obsession about this, is that I think some people are trying to squeeze all they can, reduce all they can out of these oranges, and these two family homes, and it's hard to invest in them and keep them clean and nice and put into an area, because why would they invest more money in the problems when they can't get any more revenue out of the unit itself, right? So if there's a way to help them invest, and it, it, it trickles to those fronts, it's common when we redo the streets, everybody's yard decides to work. The people they have, and they have more, or not the people, which is, where they invest into it, more likely it is to have a, the, have, put that, upkeep is likely to be better as well, in my opinion, I think, that's what I think.
So ADUs are allowed in R1, correct?
They are a certain type of ADU, as it's currently drafted, integrated ADUs. And that means a unit created that's in your home or at your home.
Are there any occupancy restrictions to this? Is it still the two bedroom?
Well, so that, that falls under the building code, as a person's zone.
I've got one question too, just kind of another point about this, the single family, two family. Looking at the map, I'm sure this is just an example of areas all over town that like this, but we've moved to Vernon Lane.
I am not.
Across from Moyer's, the horse shit.
Oh, right, yes, yes.
So Vernon Lane has a lot of single family homes, it has a lot of two family homes, and it has a couple of homes that used to be single family, and there are now duplexes. And I'm assuming by looking at the map, I can't tell exactly, is there nothing, but it's ours, you are.
You can't help?
It's probably, it's number one somewhere. And so right now, a lot of those zones are not conforming, based on present zone. And so the conversation would be, which we need to have, is really important, not existing two families, how would they do that? And, and they're a top beautiful home, it's a wonderful street, but they're, they're just such a mix match, I mean, there's a lot of, I'm sure, like I said, nonconforming uses.
And so as it's currently drafted, those two families would then become conforming uses. But all the questions that Andy's raised have yet to be addressed. But you, but that street is not alone. I mean, I, as a result of some of the work I'm doing, I have found an enormous number of two and three and four families, interspersed through all of your oversea.
You've said a couple of times that his question has not been addressed. We don't have to necessarily decide on anything now, as we had the former discussion. This is all information we can talk about, come back with more discussion, and what we think about it.
And so what I've written down, if it's okay with y'all, is those two policy questions, note, we're gonna have a conversation with the Planning Commission, June, and we will have, it will be informative as well as addressing things like that. So that would be a policy session that we will have with them, if that's okay with y'all.
Are you taking our information back to them one more time, or it comes to the combination?
I am not, but I will be providing them a written report of what we talked about here, and the anticipated policy questions that we will be discussing. But let's just be honest about it. These, these conversations are very, they move along in different directions that we don't always anticipate. So while I will certainly talk to, you know, add to them, and talk to them about, this is one of the conversations that came up, and we're gonna talk about two families and the use, there are gonna be other policy questions that may come up there as well.
And I think it's appropriate for us to have these discussions with, with the Planning Commission.
I'm thinking about this, you know, I have this information, I'm thinking about this question. Just zooming out, just to be clear, we are talking about the one hundred and seventy-three, I think was the number, of two families that would become, well, all of those, you mean, become conforming?
So some of, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
So some of the ones that Matt is talking about are in the R2 zone, which is your two family zone. So all of, so some of them are already conforming. I do not know from the number that he gave, he just gave, how many of those are in R2, and how of them are nonconforming because they're in R1.
But you've talked about them being around in pockets in the city. All of those that are in a single family, that are two family, they're nonconforming, prove this new ordinance, all of those wherever they are, would become conforming?
They would become conforming if they, when the, if the ordinance is passed, the day the ordinance is passed, they would become a restricted use, with the restriction being they have to exist.
They have to already exist.
That already exists.
Yeah, I just mean in all the different areas, wherever they are, you just said they're all spread, it covers all of them.
Because all of them.
That, that part of it is good. I mean, Planning and zoning is good with that. I'm good with that, but the question is, the question you brought up after, is what, can you do mortgages? That's the...
That's the next question.
Which is currently drafted?
But as it's currently drafted, yeah. So we're gonna, if it's okay with y'all, when we move on to multi-family, take a short break, if that's okay?
Give you ten minutes. We've got water on the fridge.
All right. So we will talk to the multi-family districts. Very few changes are proposed in the UDO, but we will highlight two. As I talked about earlier, we have two of these multi-family districts, those are the R3 and the R5. The R3 district... The R3 district is the only district for most of the multi-family parcels located along Fort Thomas Avenue that you were talking about earlier. On, it's one of those R3 parcels, we have expressly prohibited parking between the building and the front lot line, which is not the case as you record ordinance. What you see on the screen is Hollywood Drive. And think about how different that street would look and how the character would be changed if those front yards suddenly weren't taking up the parking. So specifically prohibiting parking in the front yard does ensure that the character of your multi-family parcel stays the same, at least for the R3s. The other significant change is we are adding standards to those R3 parcels located along Fort Thomas Avenue. As we will talk about towards the end of the presentation, an overlay district is proposed for Fort Thomas Avenue, which is designed to preserve the residential character of the street. As that Fort Thomas Avenue overlay district was being discussed, community members requested additional standards for the multi-family properties that exist alongside those single families. And consequently, the Phase 4 draft that you received earlier last week requires for these R3 properties that there be a pedestrian connection to the sidewalk, like most of them have today, as you can see in that picture, that they have an entrance facing Fort Thomas Avenue, that they have transparent windows and doors, and that the front setback must be within three feet of the average front setback for the R3 family or side of them. And again, these are all designed just to ensure that if, for example, that building is torn down, you don't get a building that would return and face the parking lot behind it, for example, which does sometimes happen. If you don't allow parking in the front, then the building turns its back to the street and addresses the parking lot. And so what these standards do is prevent that from happening. So before we move on, any other questions in general about residential districts that get single family or just for multi-family?
A quick question. Sharon came up and asked a question, and I just want to make sure that I understand this, because she lives on Miller, so she had some concerns. And the R1, TC1 and TC2 are just in the center behind them, between Lovely and Miller, right? They're not on the outside of the house.
Correct, correct.
Does that answer your question, Sharon?
So that minimum and maximum setback isn't all again Miller and Lovely?
So the new zoning district is R1C, TC1 and 2, and that is just for that block on the inside.
Is what you saw.
Okay.
But the minimum and maximum front setback applies in the R1C zoning district.
So that applies on my house?
It already did, right?
No, you know, it's a maximum front setback today.
Okay.
Today, all you have is a minimum front setback. And what that does is, you know, say, the house has to be at or behind that line. But for example, if someone wanted to tear the house down on one of those really long lots on the other side of Miller, and move the house back 100 feet from the front lot line, they would be permitted to do that as, under current ordinance. But that would look odd as you're walking down Miller Lane, if, you know, all the houses are 20 feet from the front lot line, and then you get to this one and it's 50 feet back or 100.
That's what the standards are for, right?
And so the maximum setback precludes that from happening.
But that only applies to one C?
It applies to, I don't know, is R1B and R1C.
But not already sits with that. It already looks that way, you know what I mean? It doesn't make sense that everybody in like that, in my opinion, sorry, I don't mean to interrupt, but this is my house.
Does that apply to another, like a second structure, like if you build a garage that had a, you know, the garage and you had a level above it that, you know, someone could potentially live in, or a pool, you know, pool house or anything, like a second structure? Or is that just sort of the primary structure?
That's the primary structure.
How about if you put something further back?
So the accessory standards are in a separate section of the zoning ordinance.
On her point though, like if her house is further back now and say she wanted to rego, does she have to bring it up to the street now?
So she could, depending upon where she sits, so it's the average plus seven feet. So you do have a little bit of wiggle room in there. But she could then go in front of the board of the adjustment, and maybe do it at that step. And just say, and that would, so again, a variance talks about unique circumstances. And you would say, my house is unique in the sense that it already violates this maximum setback. And we want to keep, for example, we build, or whatever else.
There's a 15 foot, or 50 year old tree sitting right at the setback line, but we want to go behind it.
Right, and that would be a reason for the board adjustment to grant a variance. And so that's a really good point to make, because the board adjustment, variances may be concerning, it really is that safety valve for those unique situations, because of the trees or the existing building, or because of utilities and those kinds of things. That's what the board adjustment is for. So again, we are creating these standards for ideal situations, but the zoning ordinance is drafted in a way to really give that safety valve, even through variances or the waivers. Does that make sense?
Yes, thank you.
So we will leave the residential districts and move on to the existing districts, starting with the Alexandria High mixed-use district. And so Jeff, to your question, this is where all the rezoning for properties are really going to start happening, in these non-residential areas. So there are three separate non-residential nodes along Alexandria High. Starting at the southern end, there's the area at Hollywood Drive that stretches to Pleasant Avenue. These parcels are today zoned either professional office or general commercial, which is shown as PO and GC on the zoning map. Further north, there's another cluster of non-residential uses that exists from Woodfield Avenue to Blossom, and these parcels are also today professional office. The third area starts just beyond Northern Kentucky Water District property and stretches to I-471, and includes the parcels that are currently zoned industrial park, general commercial, and highway commercial. Under the UDO, those four zoning districts that currently exist go away, and they are being replaced with the Alexandria High mixed-use district that has two sub-zoning districts. The AP mixed-use 1 is showing in blue, and the mixed-use 2 is shown in yellow on the screen. And the zoning, the sub-districts differ by their development standards, but the permitted uses are the same. So I'm going to say that again, the permitted uses are the same in both sub-zoning districts, but the development standards are different. And the reason for that is the difference, for the most part, is the difference in photography from Hollywood Drive to I-471.
So right now, say in the Alexandria mixed-use district, you have a combination of PO and GC after the map.
And as you head further north toward I-471, you add industrial park, which is where March, March products is. And then you have a portion of highway commercial that is truthfully sitting in no man's land.
So the professional office right now, it needs to get combined into one, so like right now, the professional office, like, which would include the building that was in the picture before, allows?
Yes, so the general commercial.
But general commercial does not?
No, it does. General commercial and professional office today allows residential over non-residential. And your zoning ordinance may not show that.
Oh, it was a change.
Because it happened in 2018 or 2019 or something like that. But both of those zones currently allow.
That was a huge change.
I'm sorry?
That was a huge change.
It was a change, that I will, yes, it was a change. So professional office, at least as far as I know, has allowed residential over non-residential since 2012. And then the change to allow residential over non-residential, the general commercial district happened, like I said, in 2018 or 2019.
2019.
Is that right?
That's what it issued.
That's what it issued. But it extended beyond that particular property to, I think, other zones.
Well, no, no.
I'm sorry, I think it's in other areas.
Correct, you just, you just got, so again, just keep in mind, that's a really good point to chase around about. So when you have usage districts that are put in disparate places, like that general commercial that's used all over the place, it impacts all of the disparate places, not just the one side that you're talking about. Now, for Alexandria High mixed-use, it is a place-based district. It only exists along Alexandria High. And that is, you know, that is unique to your, to this situation. We will talk a minute about the name of the commercial district, which is use-based, that is applied in disparate locations. But the Alexandria High mixed-use district is place-based and designed solely to deal with that corridor and all of its disparate issues. Whereas you have flat or topography closer to Hollywood Drive, and then you have lots that are sitting high above Alexandria High, which is toward I-471. So I apologize for chasing that route up, but it's, you know, understanding what we're doing here is important and why we're doing it. I'm sorry, I answered your question.
You did.
I'm sorry, bye. Went off on my zoning tangent. In these four existing zoning districts, the maximum permitted height ranges from 40 feet to 50 feet, with most of the area currently having a maximum height 50 feet, because most of the area is currently zoned either general commercial or professional office. In March, the planning commission decided to reduce the maximum permitted height along the entire corridor to 40 feet. And so a direct question to you is, do you have any concerns about that change?
I'll talk about this, so the stories, under that proposed change, the existing building, you said many were closer 50 feet, right?
No, none of them were 50. But there, but there's, but keep in, but they, they have, the development rights that they have on their parcel today would permit 50. And when you make this change, it would become 40 feet. But there are no buildings out there that are over close to that.
Right, right.
And this is the current stories in each one of those areas?
I'm sorry.
Stories allowed in those six stories?
So oddly enough, what you see in those text boxes are your existing standards. I don't know how you would ever get six stories and not to exceed 50 feet. But that is the one zoning district.
So that could be a thing.
But that is the one zoning district where, under your current zoning ordinance, the planning commission is allowed to give a variance of a waiver to maximum height. So maybe that's how they thought it was going to happen? I don't know. But that is your current standard, six stories not to exceed 50 feet in the professional office. I mean, four stories are 50 feet in general commercial, and then 40 feet in the R2 zones.
Not bad.
Minimum of 24 feet height.
So yes, so what is?
Does that mean it's unusual?
That, well, it's an unusual standard for Fort Thomas, but it is becoming a more normal standard in communities that are trying to control both use and form with their zoning districts. And so you will notice that in the mixed-use 1, which is the southern portion of the district, the idea for the planning commission was to create a more walkable place. And to do that, given the lot of way you live about it, it's high, there is a minimum height of 24 feet. Now, the planning commission does have the ability to waive the minimum height, but not the maximum height. And the reason behind that is, you have a good number of one-story buildings right now. And let's just say, you know, the Engineering Building is a quarter of Hollywood's and US 27, decided that they wanted to do additional redevelopment. But you don't want to force someone to find a board adjustment, but just because their existing building doesn't meet your eyes of standard. So now, in this case, they could say, we're existing building, we'd like to waive our minimum height. But that minimum height only exists in the mixed-use 1 district, and that's the southern portion of the corridor. Again, because the planning commission is trying to create a more walkable environment. And so we are using the sub-zoning districts to do that.
Are any of these subzoned, 50 miles or inches, do any of them allow residential?
So, I'm going to get to that in just a second, but the quick answer to that question is, as the Alexandria High mixed-use district is currently drafted, in both sub-zoning districts, residential over non-residential is permitted. And that was what?
And that's existed since 2012 or 2019?
For the professional office district, it's existed since 2012, and from the general commercial district, it existed since 2019.
So right now, the Engineering Building is general commercial, across three of the building, correct?
So let's go back and look at it. So the, down at Hollywood, it's a mixture, so you can see.
There's one building on Hollywood, there's two.
Yeah, there's, well, yes, there's one, which is the Medical Office that faces Hollywood. And then the Hair Salon that faces US 27 and Engineering Building and Station, all of those are general commercial. And then across the street, where the small office building is, the front portion of cemetery, the building that is a garage, all of that is zoned professional office. And then the gas station is general commercial. And then the office, the two office buildings to the north of it, between the gas station and Pleasant are professional office. So what you have is a hodgepodge of zoning districts in that area. So one of the reasons this is a place-based district is to try to deal with that hodgepodge, have similar uses, have development standards that reflect where you are along the corridor.
Now, the day, the planning commission talked about the number of stories that one would be allowed in existing districts.
So that's, we're about to get there.
Okay.
And again, if I, if I.
So stern. There was exclamation points on it. I'll teach you right there.
I'm sorry.
Can you go back one slide, please, so I can give those measurements again? Is that possible to go back one slide?
I mean, all, this presentation will be placed on. So moving on to, oh, let's go back to that. So the question before that was, you know, do you have any concerns about reducing the height to 40 feet along the entire length of the corridor?
I think I'm more concerned with stories than I am on height.
Can you take a picture and send us?
Existing divisions are 50.
No, there's no 50.
Okay. Anybody else?
I'm sorry, I didn't read that. I just said, I'm kind of concerned on stories more than I am on height.
But we've been looking at the building. It's not going to change the logo.
So what's the tallest building we have there currently?
They're all one-story.
Has it changed?
Someone appeared to have some heights.
How about, how about the houses along the?
Let's actually go look at this picture. I mean, that was two, was a house that an office building added to it, so it's kind of two stories. The one next to it is also two stories.
If you, again, how tall is that house?
Yes, thank you.
35 feet.
Okay. So you're not going to have a six-story or a three?
I mean, I'm guessing that, that's.
If you have three stories, there would be a flat roof.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, you certainly can preclude the number of stories if you would like.
Yeah, even, even an issue if you just have.
So, so here's the issue. So you have two things, the standards are doing two things. The maximum height is creating the height of the building and how the bulk of the building is, it's perceived in the lot of them. So that's one thing. The next thing is the intensity on the site. So if you limit the number of stories, then instead of having three stories, which is a more intense use than a two-story building, so you're doing both things with that standard. The height is just mass, and then the number of stories limits mass and intensity.
We had a conversation way back about just getting some sort of ballpark idea of, if you had, you know, a story, and you doubled it, could you do two? Everywhere you would be able to put residential on top of a building now, as it exists, all the way through the corridor, what would that mean in terms of, you know, additional population to this?
So I'm going to show you, going back to our conversation in February, I'm going to show you two scenarios in just a second, that deals with that for the Engineering Building and the Station. So do we want to defer, you're okay with the 40 feet? I hear that. And then the question of stories, let's defer until after we look at those.
I do want to, I do want to read it.
Is that okay?
Can you define your intensity more? When you say intensity, is that, is that in the feel when you're driving down the street? So if you have a three-story building, flat roof, are you talking about intensity? I don't, I'm kind of confused on how you.
No, so when I say intensity, I mean the. No, so when I say intensity, I mean how much the site is being used. So think about it this way. If you had a building that was three stories and the bottom of it was non-residential office, and then you had two stories of residential, that's a lot more people and a lot more use on that site than if you had a two-story building that was forty feet, with the first floor being office and the second floor being one floor.
So it's just more, it's intensity, just the population, the amount of cars, traffic?
Exactly.
Even the look a little bit as far as conforming to what the rest of the street you can drive?
Truthfully, you are not going to perceive as you are driving or walking down...
What would be flat roof, first pitch roof, most of them are pitched roof.
Well, I mean, you can have some, there is some perception of whether or not it's pitched or flat, but the reality is, if it's forty feet, it's forty feet. So in terms of how it feels in public ground, forty feet, forty feet. But the intensity is going to be very different if it has three stories versus two stories.
And the majority of our city is two stories. CBD, the rest of the business districts, there's not really the only three-story building that I really know of currently is one in the middle of town, right?
Actually, I'm working on that two, but there are, there are two, two, three-story buildings in the midway, and then there's one two-and-a-half-story building in the midway. So you do have a three-story building.
So three of them?
Well, there's two that are three, and one that's two and a half. And then, you know, the Cincinnati Building is pretty tall, even though it doesn't have to five stories.
And the apartment complex on the corner of Pat and Paul Ford, I know it's residential, but that is a three-story.
That is, that's true, it's three stories, it's a lot.
Just a collection, I mean, I know it's a different zone, but still, it's right there.
Yeah.
Some certainly answer five-story building, tucked back in there way back. That's the one that's actually, four-story spaces, Alexandria Pike, faces the back side of it. That was a lower lot that doesn't come down.
It's, yeah, it's like a three-story.
Yeah, it's the way, the way it was.
Yeah, yeah.
I think a lot of people...
How does that matter, then? Because that's, so when you look at our building, you consider the other side.
In terms of height? So right now, the way the ordinance is structured, you're looking at average, so the average is great.
Okay.
But if you're talking about stories, you will have to define if that story is at the front, because the way your topography is, you could have two stories at the front and four stories at the back, for example.
I think you only need to deal with front, because yes, you got so many hills to go like this, that you got two and a half, you could have one at the back.
Right. But again, that's two separate issues, right? One is mass.
All three, because that would have to have height going by the, not necessarily two.
We would need to be very prescriptive, given your topography issues. So when we start talking a little bit more about stories in a minute, we need to think about what that means. Now, are you, because again, you're dealing with how you perceive the mass of the building, which is the number of stories, and then the intensity on the site. Because if you have three at the front and four at the back, that's another full story in the back of people, your residential building, for example. You're all looking at me like I have some of the second hand.
I assume that I saw it that way before, so...
Go to your exam, that might help us.
Okay, so let's, let's go there, and then we'll, and if, and again, this is not the end of this discussion. We're gonna continue to have it. So when we were together in February, we had conversations about the residential over non-residential, and y'all expressed concern, y'all, I'm the planning commission, expressed concern that your current ordinance did not or does not have any density standards. It just basically says that it's a one ratio. So we talked about using the density standards for R3, which is a zone that is around that area, like from Matt was talking about in that three-story apartment building. And so what you see on the screen are the density standards from R3 that are now included in the phase four draft for both subzoning districts. So with the density stand, and so this is the KALH side and Safe Ship. So with the density standards from R3, and again, this is our back-of-the-envelope development plan that we discussed in February, and I say back-of-the-envelope because this is very rough. We're not talking about accounting for stormwater facilities, or dumpster locations, or handicap spaces, just to name a few of the things that we have not incorporated. By not incorporating that, what you see is the most intense that you could get on this site if you developed, because you have to deal with all of those things if you actually developed.
With current standards.
If you, if we were dealing, if we were actually going to develop it, you would have to deal with where you're gonna put stormwater, and that might produce the amount of asphalt, the number of acres, or the volume of building, or whatever. But our direction was, as I understood it, give us a back-of-the-envelope of the most intense that this site could be, because that's what you have on the screen. So, given the R3 density standards that I just gave you, given three-story buildings, and the number of required parking spaces, and so this is assuming non-residential on the first floor and residential on the top two floors, you would be allowed to have forty-one dwelling units in thirty-two thousand five hundred square feet of non-residential uses. If you remember, without the R3, the site could have accommodated fifty-two dwelling units. So by imposing density standards, we have decreased the intensity on the site by eleven less dwelling units. That's a three-story building, the R3 standards, forty-one dwelling units, and thirty-two thousand five hundred square feet versus a non-residential usage.
Before we talk about this real quick, could you explain the difference of why the, if you compare R3 and R5? R5 requires an additional eight hundred square feet or additional unit past the A-5. What would be, why would that difference be there?
So I'm gonna be honest with you and tell you that we have your density standards from your current ordinance, and I don't have a good explanation for that. The planning commission's direction was, the R3 districts, evaluate if R5 exists, if they work, just keep what we have so that nothing becomes uncomfortable. But I have not spent a whole lot of time trying to figure out that oddity, because it is an oddity.
So the suggested change would reduce the number of units that could be on this site, and these buildings are forty feet or less, and they have retail on the first floor, and two floors are residential, and this is the maximum we could fit in that particular space.
So this was developed before the planning commission decided to drop it to forty feet. So this might actually have to happen at fifty feet, because it's three floors, right? So what I'm showing you is, if you, and then let's move on to the next one.
Is there a, is there an option for your decision to where we don't have a residential option on top of...
Sure. I mean, you don't, just because they say permitted use, doesn't mean it's going to happen or that it necessarily has to happen, right? Because we're saying that if you have a residential over non-residential, these are the density standards and this is the intensity of all.
As it's drafted, we have residential over non-residential.
Yes.
Not just change, so we'd just be changing it back?
Yeah. Well, I, I don't want to have any bad decisions. In professional office, which a big portion of that southern already zoned that, you have allowed residential over non-residential since at least 2012. I don't know what happened before that. And then for the pockets of general commercial, yeah, we went and so allowed residential over non-residential in 2012.
If we were to remove the residential part from the whole Alexandria Pike area, what would that do to the existing current residential home, single-family, multi-family?
So all of those are zoned, you have some R3s that have single-family homes in them. Those are permitted uses, it all stays the same. For the pockets of single-family homes, those are currently zoned R1C. They will stay zoned R1C after this. So we are not touching any, and that was a number of policy choices by the commission, because they talked about incorporating the R3 parcel to just the north of Station into the Alexandria Pike mixed-use district and decided not to. So if it's zoned R3 today, it's gonna be zoned R3 tomorrow, and then all the single-family homes will retain their R1C zone. So all we're talking about are all those non-residential pockets that I showed when we started this conversation.
Once, once there are non-residential pockets, the AP's zone, could you put a restriction on them if something were to happen to the structure that's there that they would have to come back as residential? Like a single-family residential? Is that, I don't even know if that's an option.
So as it, and I'm not sure I understand the question, so if I, if I don't answer it, please tell me. As it's currently drafted, you could not put a single-family detached dwelling in the Alexandria Pike mixed-use district, because that is not a permitted use. What is permitted there, we'll talk about in just a second, are retail, office, those kinds of uses.
Let me explain my train of thought here, maybe a little. So what I'm thinking is, is one of the last things we need in a town is more density, more population. So I would not necessarily agree with having, what, is there an option to, if something were to happen to any of the buildings going down the corridor, can they, can we restrict it to be only built back as single-family? Keep existing as they are, but if something were to happen to said building, that when they, when it's reconstructed, or if the area of that plot is reconstructed, it has to be a single-family floor?
So the only thing you could do would be lessen place, like, let's just say, the Safe Ship building, and then say that the only uses permitted by right would be single-family homes.
So they'd be all non-residential?
You would lessen place of the existing non-residential, but then you would be saying that this would be, would eventually over time, theoretically, transition from a business district to a single-family.
Yeah. But that, would that cause issues for the business owner property to get loans or something?
No, as long as we allow any existing, any non-residential existing property to continue to be non-residential, that would be fine. But what I would say to you is, they are going to be losing enormous amount of development rights if you did that. And that would require very large conversation with those property owners, because as it is, you're taking some development rights from them by reducing the height. But not dramatically, because none of those buildings are fifty feet. But if you suddenly take away all of their non-residential rights, you have essentially taken most of the value of that property, which could put you in a preparing situation.
I agree. And so you get to the point where you're essentially almost indemnifying domain, taking...
I mean, you would be, you would be putting yourself, and I don't speak Chinese.
Yeah, you're right.
You would be putting yourself in a situation you'd say, for example...
Yeah, well, that's, that's obviously an extreme situation to transform, I don't think it would ever happen to transform this property into single-family. I think the main point that I'm trying to make is, how do we eliminate the possibility of having a Getty Park built, or a Sun Tzu Inn built, or something like that, more apartments, more condos built in the, in the area that we're talking about?
So you could do one, first of all, we've already prohibited multifamily. So you cannot build any multifamily on these sites.
But you could build...
But you could do mixed-use.
Mixed-use, yeah.
So the way to prevent that is to take that out as a permitted use.
What could you limit the, like, if it's, if it only had one, or if it was four of them?
You could do that too. So there are some communities who make the choice that says, you know, you're only allowed to have, it could be a three-story building, but only one of those floors can be non-residential. That is a possibility as well. So if you want to slightly leave the door open, they may do that.
I have a question about that too, because can you talk, I'm sorry to you, about it's fifty feet now, and there are no buildings that are in here fifty feet, and we're bringing it down to forty feet? This illustration here, these statistics on increased density or intensity, are these assuming, because you made a comment to the floor a little bit, are these assuming that you could get, you know, first floor office or commercial, and two floors of residential in forty feet?
So we developed, we developed this scenario before the planning commission made that decision. And I wanted to bring to you these scenarios, so that you could see what the impacts of your decisions are. So let me go to the next slide if you don't mind, and we'll continue this conversation. So if you decrease the height to two stories, what happens is the footprint of the building expands. If you leave in place the R3 density standards, you get thirty-five dwelling units and forty-four thousand square feet of non-residential. So this tells you how the site might develop or redevelop if you reduce the height to forty feet.
What's the water footage per unit that's, it was, it was for one bedroom, it was a thousand, or two bedroom, it was two...
This is in the pictures, is it?
I...
No, I don't think so. And, but that was assuming...
But that was all, like, we didn't see into our family, hallways?
Yes, that was hallways and stairwells and storage. Yeah, so that's, and that's what we did. Yeah, so that's what we did. So, again, these are just two examples of a way to do this. What one side would look like in terms of the number of units and the amount of non-residential square footage if you, if you reduce it to forty feet. So we have two, at least two policy choices in front of us.
So this is still three stories?
No, this is two.
Just, but that's, I don't see...
Well, it's, it's two stories, which could be forty, yes.
We didn't design a facade.
We didn't design a facade, we didn't just...
But under this scenario, though, you said the footprint of the building could expand naturally, but you're still limiting density?
We're limiting density by a couple of different factors. By the actual density standard itself. And then oddly enough, because you wrote, we have to have parking, that limits density as well, because you, you know, you have to put parking on the side, therefore you have to have fewer square footage of the building. So let's talk about, and again, we don't have to make decisions today, but we're raising issues.
What did planning and zoning come up with with two stories? What did they, did they come up with, did they want two or three stories? What did they say?
So they had a, they definitely wanted to decrease the height to forty. And they were unable to make the decision in terms of the number of stories.
So they were indecisive on that. I was so glad someone finally brought up density, because I've been so scared to speak about how I feel about that. But I have an extreme concern on that, and I think, I do think two stories would help.
What if the three, well, if anyone could say, okay, only one story, whether they can't decide on two or three, and just say, okay, only one will be residential, and that's what I mean, and giving them the flexibility on what they do.
If they have two stories, it's all office buildings.
Right. So, I mean, that way, we're not totally implementing what they want to do.
How would that affect parking?
So you would still have parking requirements.
Compared to that?
So you would actually probably have fewer parking spaces if you, for example, had two floors of office and one floor of residential, because we require more parking for residential than you do for office. But, you know, I mean, you're exactly right.
A lot of offices and retailers.
It is, it is. But, you know, as talks, it is on the tank corridor, so there is potentially some ability to have some mass transit there. But to Lauren's point, you would not be taking all of their development rights away, you would just be limiting the amount of residential, which does limit the intensity outside.
You know, when we talked about that taking the rights away, I mean, how many new building owners do we have down there? I would assume most of the people have owned it for the last five years or so.
And it doesn't matter that if we were old, when they bought that property, it had a certain amount of value.
But we, we added things to that, and then we're just restricting there, so...
Well, to a certain extent, you add...
Bringing it back to where it was when they bought it.
Not necessarily, you're actually taking rights from them because you're reducing the height of the building. So we can go out there's a couple...
I'm talking about the residential that part, like, the residential part was not there in some of these buildings.
For some of it, but for some of it it was, you know. So here's, here's the choices in front of you. And we don't have to make decisions today, or we can. We're all okay with forty feet. Then the next question that comes, do you want to limit the number of stories? And are you limiting it because you're concerned about the amount of residential? Or are you limited because of how the mass of the building builds? And then you have Jeff's point, which is, do we even want to allow residential over non-residential at all? So when we talked in February, there seemed to be a consensus that you did want to do that. I'm not sure I hear that now. And then again, there's also the possibility of only allowing it in one subzone or the other. So, we want to continue this conversation for February, until June, and let me lay all of this out in terms of decision points, because I think we've got a lot of decision points happening here.
I think that's wise to make this decision with planning. I think that's wise to make this decision with planning commission.
And I think it would be helpful, I mean, I, I don't, what I want right now is a whiteboard, so I draw all this and do, because I don't have a whiteboard and we don't have the limited amount of time.
Right.
I think it would be helpful if I outlined all of these policy decisions for that meeting and change.
Because it sounds like planning commission has gone through the same questions in these particular areas that have come up, that haven't, they haven't made a decision yet, that they had questions about.
Yeah, they're kind of...
Well, they are pretty...
I think that's appropriate, perhaps, to do it together.
That's what number two, that's what number three.
That's hard, but they have all endorsed residential over non-residential, the question has been the number of stories, the question has been, you know, that kind of thing, but they have not added this additional wrinkle, or two additional wrinkles, completely eliminating, you know, all residential, all above, and/or only limiting it to one, so if it's a three-story building, to only one floor of residential. So those are additional questions that they have talked about, and I think it would be helpful to sort of call in all this and bring it to...
Let me just talk out loud for a second, because if I did not make any decisions here at all, I just want to hash this out in more detail or more on the subject, but I'm specifically, just for the point of what I'm going to say, speaking of this parcel that we're looking at more or less, there's definitely, I'll speak for myself, I think for our council is an appetite because of the density, I think we all share that. This is a very interesting conversation, because what Jeff mentioned, I totally agree with the input about, if we limit, if we say no residential over commercial here, or if something were to happen to these buildings, if you come back to a single-family residential, that doesn't seem realistic to me, and I am very concerned about limiting and or taking away those property owner's rights to, to, you know, have the ability to do what they want with the buildings that they have currently, right? I mean, we're already restricting it, we bring it down to 40 feet or even 35 feet, we're restricting it more from where it is, so I think what we need to figure out as a group, and not today, is what's most appropriate to not completely hamstring the property owner's rights, but also to limit the density of the area. And I'll just speak for myself, I'm really interested in, in furthering the conversation of, maybe it looks like one floor commercial, one floor residential, and you take away that second floor of residential, however you do that, whether it's by height, whether it's by, and that's something I'd be interested in discussing further.
Yeah, and I wasn't saying that I wanted to go down the path of eliminating residential, just I was just asking if it's possible.
Right, I agree with that 100%, I, I'm concerned with density, I've obviously mentioned that, I think that is way more eloquent than I can usually about it, I welcome the idea of reducing it, because I've always been concerned with density, right? I think everybody's concern around town is, you know, transforming the town to something that it's not, right? And we have a lot of people whose personal effects, and every decision we make is going to affect somebody, but we're drawing a square circle, basically, it's, it's an impossibility not to have, you know, collateral damage from the decisions we make when we're trying to protect the environment we're in, which is what everybody wants. So we have to make hard decisions like this, there's going to be blowback from residents and commercial property on this, right? You know what I mean, so where do we meet in the middle? There isn't a middle route or something, that's a tough decision to make.
I do think the legitimate question is that we should bring up at the next meeting, do you limit two stories, commercial and residential, or do you take the other route and say, the number of stories is not the issue, but only one can be residential? Either way, you accomplish essentially the same goal, you might have two, two floors of, one floor of, say, retail, a floor of office, and a floor residential, if that's what the owner of the property wants to do. So there's two different ways to accomplish the same goal as far as density is concerned.
But also adding, so a second floor of the building, which at some point when we're not around to protect it, could be transformed into more real residential at some point as well too, because you're basically giving them the format already to do that, now you're at more high...
The way to do it would be to limit the number of stories.
Yes, I agree.
Residential stories?
Yeah, stories.
Stories in general, I think two stories is the...
But then are you limiting new businesses coming in, because think of all the office spaces you could use, where you're getting the same outcome of one floor residential, whether you have two or three?
I, I think, I think the, the density and intensity should be both looked at, where two stories would, would solve both of those problems instead of two stories of, if you make it three stories and you still have the intensity, if you make it two stories and you don't have the intensity for the next.
Well, and just so we state it, but let's just be frank about it, the, the intensity and density is different, where if it's an office use versus a residential use. So it is not an apples-to-apples comparison in terms of intensity.
Three stories with office in the middle is less intense.
Yes, it is significantly less intense if you have a non-residential, at any time, whether it's office or residential, for retail, office and then residential.
In today's environment though, how much office space is really needed, you know what I mean, that's the thing, it's a question, right? So the second floor to these spaces, really that valuable to them when it comes to space? I mean, everybody works from home now.
I could see taller spaces.
We gotta think five, 10 years.
I am thinking five, 10 years.
You gotta put the property number.
And, and also... Right, yeah, and, and let's also think about where you are in the country, right? While there are larger couples who work from home, larger corporations are creating satellite offices, you know, so for example, people can work from home, two days a week, in one house, and go to a, you know, an office here in town, as opposed to being, creating a, so forcing everyone into Cincinnati, that is the trend that we're currently seeing, is that is transition away from everybody working from home and then, or, and or everyone always wanting to approach their headquarters, you're seeing some disbarment of office uses, especially in the Midwest.
We also have to realize that, I don't know what kind of effect this is going to have, but obviously your bike keeps in a smart corridor, and that has been, you know, spunting behind it, and there's a push to go all the way from Newport on Levee all the way up NKU on bike 27 and create a smart corridor, which could be all kinds of things, it could be bike paths, it could be, you know, kiosks, it could be all kinds of things, and maybe businesses, some kind of new businesses come up because of the smart corridor.
Well, and, of course, maybe I'm wrong here, but why would we want to limit new businesses coming to...
Well, we also have to think about the traffic flow, and I'm not saying we're eliminating new businesses, I'm just saying is it necessary?
I'm just starting down.
Yeah, I'm just saying, is it necessary? Is it necessary, are we not, are we really taking away from new business going down by not allowing a second floor, or are we keeping more of the standards throughout our city that people have moved to?
I feel like there's going to be a lot, like if it's a developer is wanting to do that, that they're going to do a ton of research on what is, you know...
Yeah, so far, three units has sold out of 19.
No, I'm talking about, that's a completely different quarter.
No, I understand what you're saying, I understand what you're saying.
The only thing, just from administrative and for council to think about is this is one of very few corridors that actually has commercial that we can get revenue from, I mean, we are very limited revenue. This site here brings in a lot of revenue, so I, I would just ask that to think about that long-term, that if we can get even two stories of office space, I mean, that's, that's a perfect use, right? Engineers is what we want in these spaces, because it's very low staff, well, it's, it's low staff needs, but high occupational taxes, because there's a high P job, so those are the, those are the jobs that I'll be seeking to get here, because it doesn't require the...
If it was two stories, they could have two stories of office.
Correct, so I just, I mean, just so you understand, we have very little ability, and, and really, obviously we don't want to bring in Amazon or something, but if we can make sure we have nice office space that's available for businesses like engineering and things like that, it's just a benefit for, for the city long-term.
And these zones, these two zones that are essentially the same are the perfect place to do it.
I don't have the discount by commission either, I have a factor that, I'd like to do their info too, so I think about meeting in June, this will be something that will really, this is not...
So in that way, as it's currently drafted, you have the mixed use district permitted as a typical office and retail use, and we talked about residential or non-residential, and the planning commission has decided to permit a hotel along the Alexander Pike and Exuse District. We've included certain vehicle related uses as conditional uses with specific standards, including larger lot minimums and those sorts of things in the district, and those include drive-throughs, vehicle service stations, as well as basically gas stations. But again, because they're conditional uses, they will have to refer the board, which Anything else about Alexander Pike before you move on?
Is the corner, is that an Alexander Pike address, or is that a subdivision?
So it's not an R1D, that would call?
Okay. And there's minimum lot sizes for that?
Yes, we have minimum lot sizes for the R1D.
Actually, what do you think, 14 lots or something like that, it wasn't very tiny?
Yeah, it was, that was a mass.
And those are the, those are for the larger lots, the same ones on Newman's too, right? So for that lot.
Same, no, yes.
That was perfect, yes, perfect.
So we're going to move on to the neighborhood commercial office district, and as I mentioned earlier, this is not a place-based district, this is a use-based district with regulations that attempt to mitigate the impact of these uses in certain locations, because it applies in disparate parcels throughout the city. So as it's currently drafted, Fort Thomas Plaza would be zoned, neighborhood commercial office is currently zoned general commercial today, the commercial office uses at Highland and Grand would be the neighborhood commercial office district, and those today are a mixture of general commercial and professional office, and then the small parcel that's at the intersection of South Fort Thomas Avenue and Bivouac, which is currently zoned professional office, would also be a neighborhood commercial office district. The neighborhood commercial district would also be used for 2000 Memorial Parkway, which is the veterinary clinic today, and then 1960 Memorial Parkway would also be a neighborhood commercial office, which is where Bella Dance is at this point, and it was rezoned from R1C to professional office in 2018. So that's what I mean, that this is a use-based district that is used in different locations throughout the city. So like the Alexander Pike mixed use district, there are typical office and retail uses permitted by right, again, residential over non-residential uses are permitted in these locations, and we may want to have a conversation about whether or not you want to continue to do that.
So this same, the same thing at the old doctor's podium, I'm sorry, I don't know what it's called, down the one, the, the end, the top of Bed Street, or residential top of it, the top of it again?
So as it's currently drafted, yes, but most of the uses that are retail and office are restricted, such that they can't go in that location, so for example, a roof hub and certain types of retail uses, a large medical office could not go there, we use the restricted standards to preclude what could go there because of how impacted that site is by residential.
And how, what's the height amount on this one?
So it is...
Because obviously this is a different handle than Alexander Pike, with the ones on Memorial Parkway as well.
Yes, we do. So it is, yeah, so we have, your current standards for both of those districts is 50 feet, and it is, continues to be 50 feet.
So we want to bring that one down, because 50 feet in that area is often tall in this, I mean, especially the one at the end of Yer Street, you know, the one on Memorial Parkway, still in the residential area, I think we're talking about one of those veterinary offices right there.
Right, so, so again, we capture existing standards, all of these places were zoned either professional office or general commercial, and your current standard is 50 feet, and so that was kept in place.
So do we just want to blanket 40 feet throughout the city?
Well, you certainly can reduce the height, I mean, there are no buildings there that are anywhere close to 50 feet.
What does everybody think of that? I mean, if we're talking about Alexander Pike, which is the area, and I do have more concerns actually where that is for some, I don't know, development coming in that area and disrupting the flow that's there, and we're already on 40 feet for the rest of town.
You also have to talk at the same time about stories.
Yes, I, I agree with that, but I mean, four stories seems to...
You can fix that by a ten flat roof, as opposed to a, a, a truss roof.
Well, I think we, I think forty feet is not in play there, so I'm just saying if we get down to forty feet, and then we get the planning zone, and we can then talk about how many stories are there.
So let's, let's do keep in mind that unlike on Alexander Pike, you do have at Highland and Grand, the three-story office building, 50 Grand, I believe it's called, that is the closest of 50 feet and is already three stories.
Yeah, that's a, that's a, I mean, I saw Grand Avenue across from Hospital, that's one with...
But again, let's keep thinking about, again, we can't lose sight of the fact that this is not a place-based district, this is a use district that is applied in disparate places, so, you know, we certainly could do a couple of different things, I mean, we can restrict height in general throughout the district, we can say you can only have a certain amount of height, if you have an X mile lot area, for example, so that you would not, anyway, impede people who are at 50 Grand, but then would not allow it, for example, where Bella Dance is. So we can't lose sight that this is a use, a district that is used all over the city.
Didn't we talk about that at one point too, the, like, with the ZEP Act? Because then it's not such a nice word, isn't that a word part of it, or?
It is not, I mean, certainly, that's another way of skinning that cat, you can say, you want to be 50 feet, you want to be 40 feet or whatever else, you have to be 100 feet back from the red, which is, which is still a bit, it's a bit far for 50 Grand.
Sure, something like straight there.
That's why, that's why SARS community doesn't look as tall as it is, because it's so, in fact, and the topography on it, but I mean, they've already made everything else 40 feet down, you know what I mean? They're trying to protect it, preserve it, yet still be applied to these areas by allowing them to move in, it's just such a tough thing to do.
But if it's, if it's what we're worried about, just, you know, being on the street, I get 50 feet so far, compared to 100 feet back, I mean, I don't want to totally restrict what they can do, but if it's still giving you the same...
I think we need, I think we need to bring it up with planning zone, and see how they feel about this to get their...
Okay, yeah, all right, so let's talk...
So it's just another area we need to discuss.
Okay, so we'll talk about maximum height in the neighborhood commercial office district until we land together in June.
I, I'm trying not to restrict people, but in this sense, we're also here to protect it, so it's, it's not a fun decision to make, you know what I'm saying?
So anyway, so we are having some restricted uses, and so, for example, the way we're doing that, for, for example, hotel use, in one particular slot, the restriction is you have to have 2.75 acres to have a hotel in the neighborhood commercial office district. So therefore, by that standard, the only place you could put it is Fort Thomas Plaza. They can't go, for example, at Bella Dance, it can't go at Bella Dance, so that's how we are using those restrictions to do that, so we could do something similar for the height form or those kind, or setbacks, those kinds of things.
What about the corner where, uh, Adreno, uh, gas station and the 50, so if you add all those up, are you at 2.75 acres?
For, so if you had, if you add all four, all four of those parcels, you potentially could be, that made it actually larger than 50 Grand, because I didn't want them to go there.
But if you added those, you could put a hotel?
You probably could, yes.
How about where KLH is right now?
So again, that's Alexander Pike mixed use, that is not, and the hotel would be prohibited along there.
Just 20 acres, 236 acres.
So, so if you're concerned about having a hotel in that location, then we need to find another way to only put it at Fort Thomas Plaza, which could be, for example...
I agree with that, just making Fort Thomas Plaza, well, do we have to have it there at all, can't we just take it out?
Well, you don't have to have hotels at all.
Can't we just take it out for concern? Were they in there before, was that an addition?
So you actually added hotels as a permitted use in the general commercial district, anywhere where general commercial is allowed in 2017, 2018, something like that?
It was interesting, hotels at Fort Thomas Plaza, it got pretty far along too.
I mean, people, have you heard about hotels in town?
Oh, okay.
No, it was a problem with Fort Thomas Plaza, yeah, where you are, I don't have, I don't have a problem.
Did they ever have to bend, bend, shake that whole site, want to make a hotel? Could they put it on the site itself? I'm confused, is, do they just need a site that large and they can build any, a boutique hotel on there?
Sure, I mean, the way, the way the board, board is currently structured...
They just need a site that...
They just need a, a site that is 2.75 acres in the neighborhood commercial office district.
Is that what Fort Thomas Plaza is listed as?
That's what it will be in the new ordinance, yes, so if you, if you, A, you can completely get rid of hotels, which is what the planning commission decided along Alexander Pike, or B, we can come up, attempt to come up with another standard that would specifically limit it in some way to Fort Thomas Plaza, okay, say you have to have frontage on US 27, which would...
Didn't I read that?
There are for certain things, yes, but not, but not hotels, yeah, so we could, so I guess the, the larger question is, do you want to allow a hotel in the neighborhood commercial office? in the neighborhood commercial office district? And if the answer is yes, is Fort Thomas Plaza the only place you wanted, and then you're going to direct me to come up with a way to make that happen?
Well, Fort Thomas Plaza is the only place anybody would build a hotel.
Yeah, at proximity to downtown and east access for freeway, so. I never really discussed hotel, it was brought up a long time ago, I never really got to aside, but did everybody feel about the hotels?
Yeah.
Want to see any hotels?
I mean, I, I mean, it's in town, it's in Fort Thomas, right? I mean, they did, she did discuss one time down in Everness District, maybe possibly making a boutique or, uh, hotels down there, the one on the corner of the phone which used to be and stuff like that, and that was kind of appealing to me, you know what I mean, someone with their best of rock down there, doesn't change the size or requirements or something, you know what I mean, so, having that comforted and, like, driven, basically. So, does anybody feel different about that anyway? I didn't really thought about it too much, so.
I mean, off the cuff, I would say, yeah, I'm going to the plaza.
So what would, did you say there are benefits of the hotel?
I didn't say benefits, that's, that's the best location. The benefit is to downtown, I mean, our location's pretty good for almost anything of any size because approximately downtown, access to freeway, airport, I mean, it's a desirable location, period.
Share your concern. The roof tax goes to the convention, the business of your, correct?
There, there's a, there's a mix, but I'll, I'll tell you that there's not a lot of, of hotels, and it is a services strain.
Oh, please.
Yes. So just.
Why don't we just take them out?
Take them out.
That's fine. That's what you want.
I'd take it out then. I'll file it there.
Can, can we put a local tax on a hotel?
You know what, you never.
Yeah, I mean, you can add, add all of it, it's just. The, the problem with hotels, even the nice ones when they start, they don't always, you know, ten, twenty years from there, they usually turn into a lower level, which, as that, as that time progresses, the, the services increases, the need for services.
There's a lot of overheads, so there's a lot of income coming from employees.
I mean, the, the employee, the employee salaries are low, they're.
And they're getting warm in Melissa because you're registered online, so you have less people, less staff, so there's not a lot of, if you categorize with good side, bad side, there's more than one side.
I've, I've had a lot of experience with hotels, and it's just.
Florence is now cleaning up a lot of areas of the city, isn't it?
All right, well.
So you're taking it out then? Is that what we think?
I'm sorry, I didn't.
June, June meeting, which is, wow, you were planning.
Yeah, I'll bring it up, just because, and the same way that I bring it to, to y'all what they said, I'll bring it up to them what y'all said, but, you know, generally speaking, that's where we're heading this first.
Well, listen to, but, oh, there's some circumstances in the future, five, ten years from now, if there's an opportunity that may make a lot of sense, something like that, we can always start with, start with.
Yeah.
With any of this stuff.
Right.
If anybody could go to planning zone, he would suggest something.
They could bring a development plan, that makes sense at that point.
One other thing with, uh, the NTO, if, I didn't see where they're writing, uh, NTO appointments.
There aren't any, it's kind of a flashbang.
Would those be the same as, with the R three?
So I think we need to, and if it depends on y'all, um, bring up in June, the residential over non-residential and the neighborhood commercial office district, that as well. Um, I think that is a conversation that we need to have, if that's a, hey, y'all. So in terms of conditional uses, uh, we do have a variety of drive-through facilities, vehicle people stations, the only place in town we're allowed to have vehicle sales rental service is the neighborhood commercial office district. Again, uh, using, and that's basically for Jeff Wiley. Um, and in that particular case, I actually think there is a condition that says it has to be located on US twenty seven, um, because we were trying to narrow, we didn't want to make it use non-conforming, but we wanted to narrow where it could go. Anything else about the neighborhood commercial office district? So we are sitting at, um, quarter till eleven, and about to move into the traditional business district and the central business district, and, um, the city's historic consultant has, is now here, and so it may be, um, another hour before we get to the historic district, and so if y'all would like, we could move forward to that now. The only thing I want to say before we do that.
Wait, wait on that, are we going to, are we going to cap this meeting at four? We talked about four hours and potentially have another that's going to run significantly more, or?
Yeah, it's up to you, up to council, wherever you guys want to. We can push forward past noon, or we can just have a second one, so.
I think we just see where we're at when it comes to noon and see how much is left and what is left. Do you have a meeting?
I, I have a meeting today, I assumed that we were going for roughly four, and then it got.
Yeah.
But it's, it's another two hours left from noon, and that's.
And I will absolutely make time to do more, because the more time I spend on this, better it is for me.
So the reason I called this up is, um, on the, the paper copy that you received in the map, as well as the P D A, the brown hash marks that you see in both situations show the historic district for the central business district, and so that's for downtown, obviously.
What is, is it Wes, is that his name?
Yes, uh, well, um, can we?
We met, I got my. I'm sorry, this is Wes Cunningham, he's, uh, we're part of the board for ample of, issues that we had, uh, in some of our historical districts, and also, uh, he's beginning to work on the town center here, or, I'm sorry, the, the central business district here, as far as, um, creating mortifying, um, delineations of each of the, each of the individual properties as to historic attributing, non-attributing, so he's working on that now, and, um, we welcome.
Yeah, so thank you for doing that.
Yeah, happy to, happy to help.
So the only thing I want to put out, point out to you, is what I mentioned briefly when we, um, said a little hour ago, the way chapter thirty six in the code of ordinance is structured, something has to be zoned central business district to be in the local historic district as it's currently structured. So what that means is when we, and we'll talk about this more later, when we bring the Cincinnati Bell property into Midway and zoned its central business district, that is one parcel that we are adding into the historic district, simply because it is now zoned C B D. So keep that in your brain, and then again, all the brown hashings are what is the local historic district, that was created in two thousand and two. Okay, so historic overlay districts. So there are current, there are two historic overlay districts proposed in the code. One incorporates the existing central business district that was created in two thousand and two in chapter thirty six under code ordinances, and one is new and includes the residential parcels in Tower Park. When we started this process, we were somewhat surprised to learn that your local historic district is in your code ordinances and not in your zoning ordinance. And so what we were asked to do was to basically incorporate chapter thirty six into the zoning ordinance, but to not make any significant changes in, in terms of the parcels that are included, again, why we made it kept everything zoned central business district, that was previously zoned central business district, to not change processes, to not change the distributiveness, all of that. So all we did with the central business district historic overlay district was essentially say, what we created in two thousand and two is now in zoning ordinance, and so it's very simple in that respect. The Tower Park Historic District is different, so it would include, it is a brand new district, it would be only in the zoning ordinance, and it includes the three areas or pockets of historic homes that are in the park, and so there is Pearson Street, Green Street, and Alexander Circle and Cochrane.
What's the significance of it only being in zoning ordinance?
There is no significance other, other than it is not a new code of ordinances like the other one. What you should be aware of is because your process for issuing certificates of appropriateness and all of that rests in, in chapter thirty six, the overlay district that we are creating, with Tower Park, just references that. So again, because we did not want to event the real partially, and also because we did not want to set up a situation where you have one set of review processes for one overlay district, and a different set of processes for the other overlay district. So we just run once that that responsibility brought for us on the review board, and this is the process by which they evaluate your property, or should they appropriate this, and so again, all of that rests in chapter thirty six, and it's not.
Are we going to go over how each of these areas handles?
I'm sorry.
Are we going to go over how each of these areas handles changes?
Today?
Yeah.
Yes, sir, we are, yeah, we certainly are, um, that's where we are right now. So let's start with Alexander Circle and Cochrane Avenue. When those were brought into the city, the city at that point in time actually amended chapter thirty six to say that they are reviewed according to the Secretary of Interior Standards for Rehabilitation and the Alexander, and the Alexander Circle, um, Design Guidelines, and all reviewed by the Design Review Board. You amended chapter thirty six to do that when you incorporated those homes. Now, for the other two, back in, I'm looking at my dates, back in nineteen ninety-two, it was the military commons, H O A was formed, and it included both Pearson Street and Green Street, and there was a declaration of codes and covenants and restrictions, which is a deed restriction, that said that exterior renovations have to be approved by the city because the city is named as its developer in that declaration, and basically what it states is the owner shall repair, maintain, and use the units in a manner which preserves and protects and is consistent with the historic and architectural features of the exterior of the building. That's what that original declaration said in nineteen ninety-two, and it covered both Pearson and Green. In two thousand and four, two separate homeowners associations were created because Pearson split from Green. In that declaration, the city maintains as a developer, but only has thirty days to review and approve exterior modifications, and what the declaration states, in recognition of the historical value of the properties, members of the association are going to maintain the exterior decor of each unit in accordance with the guidelines provided by the Galactic Heritage Council and the National Park Service Historic Preservation Guidelines, which while those documents do actually exist then or now, what I think it probably meant to say was that they were governed by the Secretary of Interior Standards for Rehabilitation, that's the reasonable interpretation as to what that declaration was attempting to say in two thousand and four. So what this means is we have three separate areas that are governed in three different ways. So you have Alexander Circle and Cochrane Avenue, which you have made your chapter for, and is reviewed by the Design Review Board, just like all the buildings in downtown ultimately. Then you have, and it has a defined way to, has a defined standards by which you evaluate them, then you have Pearson and Green, which all have to go to the city, which is, that is interpreted to mean staff reviews exterior modifications, and in the case of Green, it's basically keep it historic, that's what that declaration says, and then in the case of Pearson, has to be consistent with the guidelines in the Galactic Heritage Corporation. So what that has done is set up a situation where you have a great deal of inconsistency. So what's being proposed through this, um, is that we have one overlay district that governs all of that. The major change is that for Pearson and Green, exterior alterations are not reviewed by staff and are reviewed by the Design Review Board. And now that Wes is here, he is providing input in both situations, like, even if the status quo remains, he's providing recommendations to the Design Review Board, and he's providing recommendations to staff, and then he can talk about that, um, himself in just a second. So either way, the same set of recommendations are coming forward if the status quo remains.
Is that written into the process that Wes evaluates rights to be back?
So that is not added currently in either declaration, it just says the city approves, and gives the city the latitude as to how it reviews those exterior changes. It just says the city is developer, has to review it, and they have to review it in one case in thirty days, in another case in sixty days, but it doesn't say who in the city does it, how they do it, or anything else, it just says the city has to review it.
You know, I'm assuming you're going to show us how that changes.
Yep, so, with this overlay district, while those declarations are not going to change, that will happen, I mean, we're not changing that part of the process, but it will become an overlay district, and all three of these will then be reviewed by the Design Review Board. So what we are doing is剔ening inconsistencies out of the process and having all of them reviewed by the Design Review Board. The other change is that we are providing guidance as to what, how that review is to happen, because right now the declarations are unclear as to how you evaluate them. And so we are saying Secretary of Interior Standards for Rehabilitation, as well as the guidelines that are propagated by the Secretary, are what is, are how the, um, exterior modifications are evaluated for Pearson and Green. And so, and, but again, the process for the D R B is the same process that you have to do. So we are taking it off staff shoulders and putting it in front of the D R B, and that will be the board that will review all the exterior modifications in Tower Park. Wes, do you want to add anything to any of that?
No, I think, uh, I think you covered everything we spoke about, uh, that it would be beneficial for all three areas to be governed in the same way, held in the same standards, uh, and follow the same guidelines. Right now, the way they're set up, uh, like she was saying, there's, there's a little bit of uncertainty, the M O A governs the Alexander Circle and Cochrane, which spells everything else specific to that area, while Green Street and Pearson are a little bit more, um, open to interpretation and not, not necessarily, uh, as intentional as they should be, um, for preservation. Um, I think one thing, above all of this being one of the few historic overlay districts in Fort Thomas, I think this one is paramount to, uh, that level of consistency and guidelines necessary because, I mean, this is Fort Thomas, this is, you know, the, the most significant historic district, historic collection of resources in the city. So bringing everything under the same, uh, under the same guidelines, the same, same review process keeps a sense of uniformity, and it also holds everybody to that same standard of preservation.
And in that process, how do we make sure we include Wes, and, I know it says to the Design Review Board, but how do we make sure that our?
For the staff, it's just a staff procedure, is that any time something like that comes up, I'm going to get a letter of recommendation from him, or a letter, yeah, I get the recommendations.
How long, I think, currently, that makes it Green Street and Pearson, which are H O As, right?
Yeah, so I'll give you, I think, council probably knows this, but we'll say it publicly here, so, out of this, out of these three areas, Pearson Street from, from all accounts is, uh, would like to be a part of the overlay, uh, there are no changes to Alexander Circle, and Green Street has, has shown a lot of resistance to this, um, possibly the whole street not wanting to be included. Their arguments are that their H O A handles everything pretty well, which they do pretty well, um, it does come, it comes to staff as opposed to D R B, so their biggest changes are that, um, the D R B would be another step that they would have to take in order to make changes. Currently, you know, we're still having Wes review those, even though it's a staff thing, but it, it would be the D R B and the probably a little bit more stringent regulations, or just more laid out, I guess.
So it, it would be, Wes, just move on to the next. So, as I said, um, and I was just about to say, the, the Green Street folks are concerned about having a government award and so to staff, so that's one issue, and then the other issue is the Secretary of Interior Standards for Rehabilitation, um, so those are the standards by which they can be evaluated, because right now, the, the declarations just say what I've just read to you, which is basically keep it historic. I don't mean to, to belittle that, but that has, that is what I said, that is a huge interpretation as to what that means. And so what, what's being proposed for Green and Pearson is the Secretary of Interior Standards for Rehabilitation, as well as the guidelines, and the Green Street folks have stated that they don't want to be evaluated using the Secretary of Interior standards, that they, if they have to do this, they want standards that are unique to them, so that is their other objection to be. So that is their other objection to be included in the overlay. When the planning commission initially discussed this, they felt, you know, much as Wes said, that it would be helpful to have a consistent review process and consistent standards and, you know, instead of the Green Street. And then a month later, the folks from Green Street came in and spoke to them, and essentially they, the planning commission said, you know, let's, let's take this to the council and let them have a discussion about what they think is appropriate. So that's where we are today, is, is having a discussion with y'all about whether or not Green Street should be included.
Didn't the concept of HOA restrictions actually more restrictive than the Department of Interior?
No. No, they are, as I said, they're, they're, in the case of Green Street, it basically just says keep it historic. And then in the case of Pearson Street, it just says has to be reviewed accordingly, has to be consistent with the Kentucky Heritage Council and the standards from the Department of Interior.
And what about Alexander Circle?
So for Alexander Circle, those are much more restrictive. It says Secretary of Interior Standards directly, it says that in chapter 36 of your code, as well as the Alexander Circle guidelines, which is the MOA that, that Wes was referring to.
And the MOA is more restrictive.
And the MOA is very restrictive and very restrictive. So without those homes, there are defined standards that are unique to them, that are, that give a whole lot of guidance as to how exterior modifications should be.
Bottom line is, as you said, this area within the, is the most historic stuff that we have, we wanted to stay. The question now is, how do we do that without getting people all upset?
And what I continue to hear from the people at Green is, we've worked with the city for 20-plus years now. Everything's been great, we've handled it perfectly. In fact, the properties are better now than they ever have been, and that the city's got veto powers. I just wanted you to hear that that's kind of their, their argument. And I guess my question would be, I also hear from them that the standards set by the Secretary of Interior are too old or not proper. And, and so I'm kind of asking, what's your thought on that? Is it, I mean, is this the gold standard? Is this a no-brainer or is another area?
So the Secretary of Interior Standards and by extension, National Park Service, they are the end-all, be-all of preservation. They set the standards for preservation, rehabilitation. They set the standards for what is considered significant, whether locally, nationally. They monitor and they approve things to be listed in the National Register of Historic Places. One of the reasons why Alexander Circle and Cochran are a little bit more stringent and more specific is specifically when they had to offer that MOA, they had to bring the Kentucky Heritage Council in, which is the State Historic Preservation Office, the SHPO. By bringing the SHPO in, the SHPO operates directly under the National Park Service in, in terms of how they apply standards of preservation. So the SHPO will use the Secretary of Interior Standards as kind of this blanket guideline. And then you can get a little bit more specific as, as different areas kind of call for it. When the Alexander Circle and Cochran were acquired by the city, that triggered something called Section 106 of the National Historic Preservation Act, which required the city to involve the State Historic Preservation Office. And which is why these are so stringent, because KHG had to have a seat at the table to discuss how this MOA was going to be put, put into place. So the Secretary of Interior Standards are this, basically the blanket guideline. I don't know if, how familiar people are with the utilization of historic tax credits. Everybody who lives in Tower Park is, they are open to use historic tax credits on any work they do to their house. When they decide to use those tax credits, Secretary of Interior Standards are applied. So these are the, the set of standards that are used uniformly across historic preservation.
Does putting the overlay on that affect any of that?
No. So because Tower Park is listed in the National Register of Historic Places, every contributing structure or every contributing resource in Tower Park is eligible for historic tax credits. And in Kentucky, that means you're eligible for 20% from the state, 20% from the federal government. So everybody in Tower Park, who, every historic resource in Tower Park could utilize these historic tax credits to do their house, or to update their house. And the reason being, this provides a level of incentive for people to utilize the Secretary of Interior Standards. It, it's basically, it's more in place for places that aren't an overlay district, don't already have guidelines to follow, but it incentivizes people saying, hey, we'll give you some extra money, but you have to follow the Secretary of Interior Standards because this is the way to preserve a house, or building, or site, or whatever.
Wes, have you run into situations where the standards start to be imposed upon property owners and litigation ensues, saying basically, you're, you're changing the game on me and now I'm subject to standards that are much more restrictive and maybe cost? Have you run into that?
So I have not. I have not run into that case. I've, I've seen cases where individuals spoke up against being included in overlay districts, but the entities in charge of making those decisions overruled them, basically with the, with the understanding that it is in the city's best interest to preserve these resources in the best way we know how. The people that live there might only live there for another five years and may have no interest, but it's in the city's best interest to preserve. So that has been the argument I've seen. I've never seen any kind of litigation come out. And again, if there was a situation where Secretary of Interior Standards, somebody deemed that that, you know, was, that set their project outside of their potential budget, that's why these historic tax credits exist. Kentucky is one of the best states in the country for utilization of historic tax credits. I mean, all, all throughout more of Kentucky, we'll, we'll have the big cities, I mean, this, this is how a lot of people are making this preservation happen, by utilization of these credits.
Yep. Thank you. Can we get specific on what the difference is between what they have and how on Green Street are to what we've given them? What is more restrictive and what would be less restrictive?
Well, it's somewhat of a value judgment because in some ways, it's the same amount of restricting, whether the DRB is doing the review or the city's doing the review, being city staff. The residents of Green Street see the DRB as being a barrier because it, you know, staff has to do with an exponential day, so the DRB can get a lead once a month, they can continue a project, those kinds of things. And so that is, in their minds, put into.
So the only overall, you're talking time is the only overall issue, the only change?
Well, there's that. And then as Wes was just saying, they are, and we are going from a situation where the standards by which their modifications are judged are becoming more defined. So instead of the nanny-panny statements that exist today in the declaration.
Where are you sitting down there?
They have to find standards and guidelines by which they have to be judged. So again, it's somewhat, and they are, they are expressing concern about that because they are not very defined and prescriptive to their particular street. But there are some communities, as Wes said, who take it from the next level of the Secretary of Interior Standards and go, you know, into much greater detail, in much the way the MOU does for Alexander Circle. But there are plenty of other communities that use the Secretary of Interior Standards and don't take it to the next level of defining standards for individual, you know, historic districts. So I don't know that I can, that, I mean, I certainly must have to tell, but I don't know if we're making it any more or less restrictive, we're making it different.
Well, that seems like the question I was just asked, is whether or not they have any recourse to come back on this for making this change so significant they can't get what they want done. It sounds to me like we're just changing it from their board to our board.
And.
Is that correct or is that not correct?
Essentially, like Wes was saying, it's basically, we're just being more clear on what that, as she said, right now this is keep things historic. We're being, the Secretary of Interior Standards is more clear on what that pertains. It's going to, you know, talk about what materials are, you know, of property, that have property to be used on, on a historic house like this. It's going to talk about, you know, how changes are considered to these, to these buildings. And honestly, right now, since I was brought on board with the city a month ago, I have been the one reviewing applications from Green Street that would go to just the staff. And I'm also the one reviewing the things that go to Design Review Board. And I'm providing the same level of recommendation either way. So when I review something for Green Street, I'm going to take the Secretary of Interior Standards and hold that and, and make that the case. But again, that's all I'm finding while I'm here. If I'm not consulting in two years for the city of Fort Thomas, it, it would be, at everybody's best interest to have Secretary of Interior Standards outlined and highlighted. So that, basically, preservation is not appropriate.
That's always my concern with anything we do, is that we're not always going to be the ones monitoring this stuff. The people that live on Green Street, the people that live on Pearson, the people that back there, especially if they're self-monitoring, you get seven new people, six new people, six new board members, you know, and we're trying to preserve some protection. But it's just the same thing with our ordinances that, over our boards, you know, we're always going to have Matt, we're always going to have Tim, you know, Kevin. And we created these things for protection and some can interpret them a different way, right? So the best way to do it is define it as well as possible to preserve it from the future. So they're all always going to be there and it seems to me like the easiest standard would be to overlay over everybody. Because as I, as I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, Pearson Street's talked about dissolving their HOA, or they have previously, right? So they dissolve their HOA, that puts them into a, a different district, right, that the city has not put, some type of overlay on. I'm not saying that this historic overlay is perfect here.
They're still subject to declarations that run with the land.
But if, if the land would go back to them though, right?
Well, we don't really, I mean, that's a note, right now, it's definitely, the overlay would definitely be Pearson and Alexander Circle because we've had no contention on that.
Okay.
And just, of everything we've, we've talked about that is correct, that's why the staff's recommending all of it, right? And we, and we haven't done that a lot. We don't like to.
I don't like, I don't like to change, I don't like to make the sharpness in all these questions.
Right. We don't like to change, and you guys have heard that and been upset with some of our recommendations because of that, we don't like to do that. However, we do think this is really critical. We don't think it's a huge change other than the board having to go to the DRB. And yes, the HOA is up to this point done pretty well, but that doesn't mean the next board won't be doing it. And I feel like at some point, Green Street is going to be in the overlay, whether it's, we do it now or later. So our recommendation to council would be to include them. And I will say, if we don't include them though, the stipulation would be we would have to update their HOA, which we've already kind of discussed with them, like if, you know, we're, we're wanting them included and council decides not to, one of the contingents I'm going to ask council to put in there is that we negotiate with their HOA to put in some restrictions. Because right now, we really don't have a whole lot of authority to fine or really push them if they decide not to follow our standards, right? So that would, at a minimum, if council decides not to include them, because they come, you know, 100% of the residents don't want to be included and council, which I can understand, would, would be able to exclude them. We still need to get something changed in their HOA agreement to allow us to have some forcefulness to, when, when Wes gives us the recommendation to say this is how it has to be, if they say no, right now it's really hard to find them or anything. So just so, I mean, does that make sense? Those are, if, if staff is asking to be, have them included, but it's not, we at least need to change their HOA.
Wes, I'd be, I would be thrilled with the overlay, but I'm wondering, do they have a valid concern that someone say the materials that are outlined in the secretaries that are more general, you can use this, this and this, and that doesn't really fit with their specific look, like that we could, it could be modified some way to, you know, in a couple of different categories to more specifically fit what they have?
So I think I'm understanding, so you're asking, would this, would there be a situation where the Secretary of Interior Standards recommends XYZ, it is determined by the homeowner that that doesn't fit their aesthetic, that historic?
Yeah, one of the concerns, right, was it's kind of a generic template and it isn't specific to their, their area?
So.
Is that, I mean, is, and my question is, is that a legitimate concern?
So when, when we talk about the Secretary of Interior Standards, we had, you know, a numbered list up here of these kind of broad ideas that the Secretary of Interior Standards push. In addition to that, there are bulletins and booklets of every, there are National Park Service bulletins on everything you can imagine, from, I mean, I think I've seen them recently on how to, you know, maintain historic, you know, single-family trailers. I mean, they, they covered the gap. And the idea being that the Secretary of Interior Standards, you're held to those standards, to find the specific guidelines that meet your case, you find a bulletin in there and that tells you how, so for these historic homes, you know, historic, you know, the historic windows, you look at what windows exist and you go to Preservation of Historic Windows, National Park Service Bulletin. And you go through there and it has every case that has happened in the last 50 years of preservation, it can fit somewhere in there. So you're not going to be held to this, that numbered list we see up there is just kind of the overarching theme of these, this is what the standards are about. These are what the standards are going to encourage and push. But for each case-by-case basis, you visit the National Park Service bulletins that tell you how to deal with those historic individuals.
So that was, that was kind of feedback on his question, it was something I was thinking, like, there are times when you just, you know, the costs obviously, not just for that individual project, but for the overall homeowner when it comes to double paying, you know, glass versus vinyl versus redoing their front door versus using a certain material. How strict are they on those? If they want to replace them with an updated material that's going to last longer and be more user-friendly and long-term?
So they've started to, with the technology that come, that comes out every new year with, with home materials, they've started to allow more. Yes, there are going to be stringent guidelines on, you can't replace historic wood double hung windows with vinyl. It's just, I mean, it's not a good material, it's going to need to be replaced in 15, 20 years. But again, any historic preservation consultant would take what they have in their HOA right now, which is keep things historic, and they would say the same thing, that vinyl does not follow their existing HOA guidelines. All the Secretary of Interior Standards does is put it in writing to say, all right, specifically vinyl is not okay, but here are the materials that, that work. And the Kentucky Heritage Council, the SHPO, they have people on staff, and again, one of the, I know this isn't the.
I know I said vinyl, but I'm just using that as a generic term.
Oh, yeah.
That's better than what they have now that'll last longer, more cost-effective for them.
So it's.
I don't want to restrict them so much that they can't fix something the right way for long-term.
So like I said, the technologies and, and National Park Service, they're constantly reviewing their, their guidelines on, as new technologies come out, what will be allowed.
That can make these things appealing to people, right?
And again, one of the benefits, especially living in the state of Kentucky in a National Register District, is if you're being, you know, if you're being asked to use, you know, a higher quality window, you take that, apply for historic tax credits, the state and the government, you get 40% back in your, in, in project costs if you apply for those historic tax credits. And the State Historic Preservation Office has people in their office, whose job it is day in, day out, review these tax credit applications and to make case-by-case basis of what, they make case-by-case basis decisions on what is appropriate and what isn't.
Is this something you would help these people on, any overlays that we did, apply for these things, would we be using the services to help them guide them through that or not? Because I think that would be attractive to them if we're going to do something.
There's state assistance.
There, there are. And one of the, one of the jobs that I have outside of private consulting is a firm that specializes in historic tax credits. I mean, I'm, I know I can't sit up here and say, hey, hire me somewhere else, but there are. But no, there are, there are people at the state, there are tax credit reviewers at the state, whose job it is to help people do this. And they, they do it day in and day out, they work directly with homeowners, they answer all the questions you need. Just in northern Kentucky alone, there's a lot of very useful people to talk to. I know Scott Clark in Newport, who's their preservation officer, pushes this all the time. He is very knowledgeable on what applies to tax credits and what doesn't. And it's, it's, it's a pretty painless process with the help of the people at the state. They play us a day, they do it day in, day out. And Kentucky is one of the few states that actually allow credits on single-family homes. So if we were right across the river, homeowners wouldn't be able to take advantage of these credits, but in Kentucky, they can.
Hey, don't worry. You're very excited about putting this on our hat on to help these people out.
And it's almost like they qualify for tax credits. And is Paul's going to, they qualify for tax credits?
Oh, it's Green. Sorry, I think what you said.
Green Street, as it is now, would they qualify for tax credits if they stayed out of overlay?
Yes, because of the qualified, or the qualifier is what it says, is that you have to be in a national registered district. And tile park is.
Okay, all right. Last question for me, I think. The, I'm not suggesting, I just know the questions that are going to be asked as we go through this. Is, is the Secretary of Interior Standards, I know it's a gold standard, is there anything close to it? Is there anything that's, that...
Homeowners.
This is a, you would ever say, hey, this is it?
Well, I mean, so the, as usually districts are applied throughout the country, different neighborhoods and things, people can choose to adopt their own, they can choose to, but in every case that I've ever seen or worked on, the Secretary of Interior Standards is the starting point. And then you can get more specific, you can...
Ask requests from any...
Exactly. You can discuss things that are more applicable to whatever neighborhood or community that you're talking about, or, you know, take people's, you know, thoughts into consideration. But the Secretary of Interior Standards is the, is the starting point. It's, yeah.
Thank you. And Matt, you're saying that the staff recommendation, the city administration is to just...
Yeah, we, I mean, we think it's appropriate. And as with everything in this zoning, if something comes up in nine, 10, 12 months, that this is restricting them from doing something that's reasonable, then we can have to take a look at it and even change the ordinance. I mean, if that would ever come up, where we're taking away a reasonable historic change, I don't think that would be the case, but we do have the ability to do that. So, from what it's, from what it's worth.
The only question I have, I like the recommendation, I think it seems to make sense. Wes, thanks for all the information. The only thing I'm curious about, and we touched on it a little bit, is why the pushback only from the residents on Green Street? I mean, I understand they feel that they're...
Because they already have...
...beyond currently. Is that the primary reason?
Yeah, the primary reason is because they do have, it'll take them longer, they do have to go to the DRB, and they feel like they already have a good process in place. So they don't want to be over governed.
Can we remove the DRB part or modify it some way for the whole overlay? If that's the concern, do we have to include it as is?
No.
I guess we...
So, the way the overlay is structured, it relies on Chapter 36 of the Code of Ordinances, which is, requires review by the DRB for certificates of appropriateness. So that's one issue. Which is, and then the other issue, which is probably larger, because you can always envision a code, is that certificate of appropriateness as a decision is a quasi-judicial decision when it comes to the decision buckets for localities and municipalities. And typically, those are done by boards and conditions as opposed to staff, because they are quasi-judicial. And we, and the definition for quasi-judicial is discretion and judgment which required, as opposed to either meet the step back or you don't, which is an administrative decision.
And allows them to make an appeal and they're, they're happy to find some back by going through the DRB?
Yes.
Right. And so it's not, I want to say that it's never done, but it is highly unusual for, because it took little appropriateness, for major items to be reviewed by other than a designer people. Now, minor things, like the authority that was recently given to the zoning administrator to do things, that is typical to do. And minor is defined in different ways in different communities, and Wes can certainly speak to that. But for major modifications, you know, a new porch, let's paint it pink, those kinds of things, those, because of the nature of the decision, is most typically done by a designer people.
What about just the adjustment happening on the timeline? So if something were to come up in this overlay district, that if we expect the DRB to meet more frequently or put a week timeline on it or a two-week timeline as opposed to every month? If they're concerned with the timing of everything, we could potentially adjust the timing of the review.
That is true, but don't lose sight of the other concern that they've expressed, which is not just the fact that you have to go in front of them, which could mean a month, depending upon when they submit their application, but it could also mean that they get continued. So they don't make the decision the first month, the DRB says, we want to think about this some more, so we're going to continue to that month.
Are they going to decide if they did a board on a regular basis anyways? Or they just do what they feel like they can do? I mean, if they have an HOA, they have a board, I know by HOA, four meets once a month, you know what I mean? They'll get emails, whatever anybody wants, so aren't they already on a time restriction? Or do they just do what they want when they want to do it?
I'm not sure. I mean, they had monthly meetings, I'm not sure if they wait for the monthly meeting or if they call special meetings.
I mean, I think that's a lot of, right, it's hard to get all that together, and I think that that would be, they will discuss it in a, in general. You know what I mean? I'm just saying that what's the timeline now? They argue that there could be a timeline issue with the HOA, if you're at ours, each once a month, right? And you make those decisions, right? So...
Is there a possibility to allow staff to make some level of decisions that might be a compromise of people on the street?
No.
Like paint color choices or something like that, or is everything...
So we could, you know, you just recently changed your ordinance to give more express authority to the zoning administrator for minor modifications for Central Business District. So we could do something similar in tile park as well. The other thing would be that you could put a time clock, a shot clock on the DRB so that, you know, the decisions have to be made within X number of days, so that it can't get continued, you know, forever. Those are the two options.
That's kind of what I was thinking, yeah.
Aren't they following the speed of the process? Because I understand, especially, you know, how many days in advance does somebody have to give you something before it goes to the DRB?
So actually, that process, we could actually change that process with the new, where we advertise link. Now, they have much less of a timeframe for which we need to submit for advertising.
Oh, good.
So, but the only problem is, we do need time for staff review. You know, obviously, if it is something we deem that we need to get to Wes, you know, if it's certainly a very minor, minor thing, the designer review board is actually, we've had this conversation recently, they've actually given us some latitude, the actual design guidelines give staff a lot of latitude. I've traditionally not taken a lot of latitude, but they have actually, we've had certain instances where it's very minor modifications, and they've allowed us some latitude, the designer review board. So, you know, some of it could be in that regard where administratively, we just, we do that. But beyond that, we just want to make sure we have enough time for a proper review for those more difficult issues.
Okay. And I hear the critical thing you said is the change in state law allows us to use link NKY instead of publishing in a paper, that helps a lot. Probably talking, two weeks, a month, three days?
So currently, the application is required by the first Tuesday of a given month for the meeting, which is the fourth week. Because it's three weeks to, you know, get the application, digest it, get it to Wes, have him review it, perhaps at least a week, maybe two weeks, and then us to formulate something in the form of a proper agenda, proper report, complete report to, to the staff.
And that, and that is the issue right there, because when it's done at the staff level, and I'm sure that the people on Green Street are saying, this is the problem, because, oh God, it's Tuesday, I didn't get it done until Wednesday, so now I gotta, instead of doing it in May, now I gotta do it in June. If there was some latitude there, if there was some ability to say, this is when we prefer to have it, by the Tuesday, but we can take it up to a later time, or if there is some process by which we can speed it up, I think they might be more willing.
Everyone's the same process as everybody else, it's the follow-up, right?
Yeah. How loud?
And they've got it stored, huh? I mean, isn't it the same?
No, I'm just, I'm trying to describe why I think you are opposed to...
Yeah, I mean, some of them, some of them, and everybody else that has something, that's got to go to the DRB.
Right.
Everybody in the entire city, right? So they're, it's not like they're good to, you know, they're required to do anything else that anyone else in the city doesn't have to do, and they've got it in store, the home that we're talking about.
I'll say that we internally oftentimes push those deadlines. If we can get one in, somebody's a day late, get your application in, let's chop, chop, let's get this thing done. We do whatever we can to get these and try to hit these meetings. And the reason we try to keep the meetings consistent is, you know, we have board members that block that day out on their calendars, you know? So changing it isn't always that easy. But we, all the time, we will extend that date for submittals, just not only for the ease of the applicant, for, sometimes for our ease, it might actually prevent us from having a meeting next month. You know, hey, let's get this thing in, we'll knock it out. So we do whatever we can to expedite it.
Do they have to put an application for every single thing they do to their homes? Railings, windows?
We ask them to put everything on there. Now, everything may or may not be applicable, but show us what you're going to do and we'll...
So can, can some of those things be chopped off and just go to YouTube instead of having them through five weeks of board?
No. And so that's what we were talking about, is potentially extending the latitude that you've given Kevin and Wes in Central Business District to tile parks, with some of those minor modifications, that maybe y'all make those changes. It was currently in Central Business District design guidelines, which you codified it back in March of last year. So we add...
I'm not talking about, I'm talking about the color of paint, you know what I mean? Like, you're telling my heads to be this color of paint, that kind of thing.
Right, well, I think that there's, when we start seeing things over and over again, or consistent decisions by the designer review board, or consistent recommendations from Wes, and these same things keep coming up over time, those are going to be easy to just, yeah, we can probably do that. I just, obviously, we want to do that in a manner that is legal and in language that we put in there, but I wouldn't have a problem doing that administratively as time goes on.
Yeah, I'm not talking about new decks, I'm not talking about anything. I'm talking about like colors and the type of material they allow to use for the door, that they want to replace their door versus waiting, you know what I mean? Like, which you would have to fall the same way as they would have to fall anyways.
I don't know, I don't see what they're happy about. I mean, how many have you, have you seen from Green Street over the last five years?
Not a lot, actually. Green Street, they've had a couple recently, two recently. Before that, I think the last one might have been under Ron. You know, so really hasn't been a lot on Green Street. Alexander Circle has had a few more, they're starting to, you know, get settled in over there and want to do some improvements, but those are already regulated by the designer review board. So I'd say the most activity we've had lately is more out of Alexander Circle.
So are we all in agreement, that we want to do the historical overlay with a possible review for a couple outlets for you to make decisions?
And so my recommendation for that would be, let's do it as staff recommended, if, and let them know, hey, if things come up, you can show us that this is an undue burden because of something so simple, then we make modifications move forward. Because right now, we're just guessing, right?
Okay, makes sense, right? As soon as, as soon as the pile of requests, you know, if you have a survey...
Like we talked about this whole zoning, until Mark starts applying and Kevin's, we start applying it, you're not going to know all those little things.
I like that, that's a very smart...
But I would still, I would stick with the standard, and then by all means, if they come up and say, look, this was ridiculous, isn't it? And we can look at it, say, yeah, okay, and we bring it to council, we can make those modifications at that time.
Sounds like a great idea.
I think that is a very, create a survey, essentially, of what the things are, and there's the protections in place. What does everybody think?
Do we need any more discussion on historical overlay?
We're down to 20 minutes.
Right, right. No, I think, by the way, I know that is a concern of everybody in the historical overlay, so I think a lot of those questions weren't necessarily generally directed at Green Street, Pearson, but as the overall effects it would have on anything we do further in the city as well, too. So I think we need that kind of discussion, so I appreciate everybody's input.
No, I think it's important that we have that.
Okay. Since we're down to 20 minutes, and we do have, we have issues because, yes, there's folks that have other places to go. Can we do a speed read through the remaining of it to see if we feel like we need to have another meeting, or whether we can accomplish the rest of it at our June meeting with...
Or can we just schedule another meeting with all of us?
So the need that we still haven't discussed is the Central Business District, and there's all...
I think maybe we schedule another meeting for that.
I mean, there's everything from number of stories to maximum building height to maximum building width. There are lots of details.
Is that what's left for the Central Business District?
It's the Central Business District, the Traditional Business District, which is in Vernus, and the Fort Thomas Avenue Overlay District, which is a new concept that y'all have never talked about.
And Midway is a Midway in their territory.
Midway is a part of the Central Business District, yeah.
Okay, so that's such a long, a broad subject, maybe we do schedule another meeting. I think we do know.
So, I, my question to y'all is, do we schedule that meeting and then have the joint meeting with the planning commission?
Yes.
Okay. So can we look at that schedule and get back?
I lost getting everybody. It's easy, right?
The easiest thing to do is just schedule all of you.
So if you wanted to, we could spend the last 20 minutes on the Fort Thomas Avenue Overlay District, and then just hold all of the traditional business and central business till the next week.
Whatever you think.
Does that work?
Fine. We're going to have another meeting, I just wanted to deal with it now.
Yes, yes, sir.
That's a good question.
All right.
I guess it's time to process, because this is already on the consumer's...
It's as normal as a map material, yes. So the Fort Thomas Avenue Overlay District, so again, it's an overlay district, but it's not a historic one. So the Fort Thomas Avenue Overlay District is a zoning overlay district dedicated to the protection of traditional development patterns and neighborhood character along Fort Thomas Avenue. The regulations promote and protect the character of single-family detached and detached homes along Fort Thomas Avenue. And this really idea came from many community members who said, and this is the word that used to be, the avenue defines us, right? And it defines us because of all of those single-family homes. And we want to make sure that that defining feature doesn't change too much. And of course, the devils in the details in terms of what does too much mean. And the planning commission had long conversations about how much you love regulating the design of the single-family detached dwelling. And so what we're going to go through is where we ultimately landed. And so the Fort Thomas Avenue Overlay District overlays properties that are zoned are R1A, R1B, R1C, and R3. But it only applies to single-family detached dwellings, two-family dwellings, and residential care facilities for persons with disabilities. So therefore, if an R3 parcel is occupied by a single-family home, which some of them are, it applies. And if it is occupied by multifamily building, it does not apply. And as we talked about earlier in the discussion, that's how we added those design standards for those R3 properties along the avenue. So what we are regulating is new construction, because that's important, right? If you have dramatically different home style on the avenue as a new home, so new construction is regulated. Then in terms of the devils in the details, the planning commission had long conversations about what kind of substantial additions need to be regulated. And ultimately came down to if it's a modification that affects the front of the home, the sides routinely, then it was regulated by the district. What's important is that it's reviewed by the zoning administrator at the time that the building permit is requested. And if they conform to the standards that we're about to go through, then they get their building permit just like always. So no extra time, no extra issues. If they can't conform for whatever reason, then they can request that deviation from the designer review board. And that's one of the new powers and duties that we discussed four hours ago. So what are we regulating? We are tightly regulating the front setback for the principal dwelling. So it has to be within three feet of the average. We are regulating the placement of detached garages. They have to be at least 10, they have to be behind the hole and at least 10 feet from the front of the facade of the home. We are regulating attached garages in terms of how much the, how large the door can be. We are regulating that freestanding carports have to be behind the dwellings. We are regulating roof design, building orientation. We are prohibiting, and this is a large topic of conversation, the closing of existing front porches. So if you have a front porch, you can enclose it with screen or glass. If you have one that's enclosed today, you can maintain it.
Okay, an existing front porch, you cannot enclose with screen?
Correct. That is a key provision in this overlay district.
What about with retractable screens?
Again, you cannot enclose it at all. And that was a conversation that was had both by the planning commission and community members, because they portioned defining feature of the home, and when you start enclosing it with screens or glass, you change that defining characteristic. This is the actual toughest regulation in the whole overlay district. We are prescribing that they have some transparency on the front, meaning you can't have, you know, you have to have windows and doors. And then we are saying for solar energy systems, they have to, if they're on the front of the building, they have to be integrated into the siding itself. So for example, you can actually order it, you can actually buy solar energy systems that are roof shingles. That would be permitted on the front of the home, but you can't put solar panels on the front of the home. But if you have siding, that's a solar energy system, you'd be able to do that, but you can't attach a solar panel to the front.
But you can do it with the sides in the back of that.
Yeah, all day long.
Just on the front.
So again, what they're, the planning commission was trying to do is maintain the look of the avenue as it's viewed from the right-of-way Fort Thomas Avenue. What happens on the side and back is not regulated. So we had long conversations in both phases two and three about where this district should start and end. And so where we ultimately landed is that starting at the north, again, we're just hovering single-family homes and two-family, we start at Covert Run and we go all the way down to Mount Pleasant Lane. Then we go from Mount Pleasant Lane down to Cliff View. And then we go from Hartwick down to the City Building and then it skips downtown. Because again, all we're regulating are those homes in this district. It picks back up at Shaw Humble Place and goes down Big Black Avenue. And then on South Fort Thomas Avenue, the district picks up and goes from Big Black to the Cincinnati Building, Bell Building. Again, we skip Midway and it's south of Midway area and terminates at US 27. So when you look at the deeper version of your map, it is that blue hash mark that goes from extreme north, as we talked about, all the way down to US 27.
So it's only a basic...
Correct. I actually looked.
Where it does, that doesn't count.
Correct. And so I viewed all of those individually and made a judgment. If it faces the side street in this dot plot, if it faces Fort Thomas Avenue, then it does.
Would that be like that white house with the garden? Is that a good example?
That could be one, but there's also, on the north end of town, there was a home, an older home that originally faced Fort Thomas Avenue, I don't remember where it is, maybe at Mount Pleasant. Originally faced Fort Thomas Avenue, but when they added onto it, they changed the facade and it now faces the side street. So that parcel, for example, is not, oh, I'm sorry.
It's lost.
Yeah. That's another example.
Could it be based on the address of this house?
So not necessarily, because in some cases, their address off the side street, but their front is on Fort Thomas Avenue and vice versa. So I physically, using online mapping, went through all of them and made determinations that, A, it looks like a single-family, B, it faces Fort Thomas Avenue. And so in the case of Ben's uncle's house, because they changed the orientation, they're not in the district.
Now, if they were to face the side street and have a side porch on the front street, would they be able to screen it in?
Yes.
Size on them?
Yes, because they're not in the district.
Could we just do, if you're on the avenue, so we could include those homes?
You could if you wanted to.
Would that be simple?
Well, it depends a lot, I mean, yes, there's definitely simplicity to that.
Because you're telling me that if they don't face it, then they could have solar panels right on that side that would face avenue?
That's true.
So if we're trying to get a conforming look, wouldn't there be any houses on the avenue, period?
You certainly could do that. And if one is willing to do that.
I'm not saying to do this, I'm just saying, you're saying it's conforming, that their house happens to face the other direction, and all these other houses, and then they're an obstacle, and they could have a screen and solar panels on the outside of it.
Sounds like you think there's a drawback, what would that be?
I'm sorry?
Sounds like you think there's a drawback, what would that be?
So in most cases where that's happening, like for Ben's uncle's house, and if someone who live in town, the lots are larger, they're set further back from the street. So the impact to the street is not as great. And in fact, when we started this exercise, we really were going from where it goes from the boulevard south, because those are the smaller lots with the houses closer to the street. And so the character of the home really does impact how, the character of the avenue because of how small lots are and how close to the street they are. So as you get further north, as I said, the lots get larger and the setbacks are further. And if they're already facing the side street, they probably have a fairly good distance to the avenue as well. So we certainly could do that, but I'm not sure that those parcels are actually impacting the avenue that much, given the geography of those sites. As you can tell, I spent a fair amount of time.
I know, I just don't. They don't have a fair amount of impact, but they do have impact.
They do have some.
I mean, if you share one of those houses down, put up a very modern-looking house, you can clearly see that. It impacts the visual.
I agree with you.
So right now, do you need a COA from DRB to tear down a house?
So the only time you need a COA, which is probably this for the DRB, for a home, would be on Alexander Shore.
That's it?
That's it, because...
Even with this overlay, you wouldn't need one?
So in the overlay, you would just, they could just tear it down, if they conform with the standards we just talked about, they could have building permit from Kevin Mark, and they would build it. And they would then only need to go upon the DRB if there was a deviation. So again, but let's keep in mind, I don't mean to be overly pedantic, but that's my nature, you know that. So the DRB wears two hats under the new ordinance. They wear the hat that they've always worn, which is reviewing historic properties. And those are those quasi-adjudicial decisions about the properties in downtown and then potentially in Tower Park and then already on Alexander Shore. This new hat would be a purely designed review, but not a historic review. So in this particular case, they're saying, yeah, if they don't be seen, they would go to the design review for a deviation. And that they very long with the answer, I'm just trying to make sure that we understand their dual role.
So and then in the DRB ordinance, one of their duties is to decide on whether or not something's a landmark home. If something is a landmark home and it's not in CBD or, let's say it's just on North Fort Thomas, if they decide that a home is a landmark home, do we need a certificate of, to tear that down?
You would actually have to create an overlay district in the zoning ordinance to put that hat on that. So if they decide that a home is a landmark, you would create a limited overlay toward that landmark in the zoning ordinance, and then they would review it under their historic review hat.
But by them saying that something is a landmark home, that doesn't mean that you have an overlay, they just say it's a landmark home?
And I don't remember off the top of my head what chapter 36 says about, I think it says that how the ability was declared a landmark, but because of the way that chapter is structured, if it's not zoned Central Business District, it will not come into the little historic district. So therefore, you would have to create one to then give them the authority to do it. So the question I hear from y'all home is maybe we go back to the drawing board and include some of those parcels that sign on Fort Thomas Avenue but don't fly on that. So maybe when we get together again, we take the map that I just showed you and say, now these other parcels will be included. Is that what you'd like for me to do?
We should have a little bit of broader discussion on that and see who affected it would be.
Yeah, there's only half a hat, that's exactly what we'll do, I'll just create a hard one that says, this one wasn't, but now is. And this is what it looks like in front, and this is what it looks like inside.
I think it's a very simple discussion, most we see.
And I don't think it's, I think it's half a dozen houses at most, I think it's less than that probably. So yeah, that's how we'll do that. But in general, y'all seem okay with the concept, even though it's very different. It is a design residential overlay district that you've never done, but you seem okay with that. Generally okay with what we're regulating, just concerned about what parcels we're including. Am I hearing that correctly?
I think overall, that's one of the best things that I've heard, seen so far, that tighten up what people really want, needs to preserve here at Fort Thomas Avenue, walk on the street. That's what people are most scared about, as we've seen lately, you know, on the south side, I would get portioned, house that had to be tore down, reasons that are beyond our control, people are trying to protect where they see the feel of Fort Thomas. So how do we achieve progression without taking away the values that people move to for in the thought, you know what I mean? It's a tough, it's tough, not everyone's going to win.
And so what I, to further reinforce what Matt said, you know, the planning commission not only spent a lot of time talking about the boundaries, they spent a lot of time talking about what you regulate. And we started out regulating much more, started regulating things like whether or not you had to have a front porch, and how tall your house could be, and various other things, and ultimately landed here with those things. And y'all may find six months or a year, six years from now, that you want to regulate more or less. And this will be a place where you have those discussions, because this is the first time we've done it. And I don't think the planning commission would say that these are all the things, or this is necessarily the best things they should have landed on. But they did have, just to be really frank, they'd use some difficulty with, you know, if this was my home, would I want someone really telling me that I have to build it at 25 feet because the home's going to be beside the usual effect, you know? Why would we have to have a front porch because the home's going to be beside it? So this is where they landed and this may be a place where we tighten up elusive over time.
Because everybody's all...
So then the duty of repair falls under the, who goes around and then you got to fix it?
That would be falling under Matt and Kevin. And truthfully, everybody has a duty to repair, right? But at the planning commission's direction, they said explicitly put it there so that everyone understands that, just how much we value the avenue.
It seems like I hear more and more people, nobody likes to be told what to do, overall consensus is they want to protect whatever we have. So it's like I said, it's like drawing a square circle, you don't have a lot of people looking at it. Hey, that's the truth though, right? So how do we find happy meetings for all of that, right? And protect, they all want the same thing, they just want to see that happen to them, so it's tough, but it's right.
So one last question on that. So why, what was the thought behind stopping at Covert to 27? I mean, you've covered probably 90% of the stretch of, you know, going through Fort Thomas, you can take, you know, on down from Covert to Dayton, there are some houses there facing Woodville, if you took a left on 27, you've got a few more houses there. Why truncate it right there?
So in terms of truncating at US 27, the fault was, is the avenue. And so it terminates at US 27, so we truncate it there. The nature of the homes that are north of Covert Run are sort of ranges and are very, are not necessarily of the same character as the ones that are south of there. And so that was the thought process for the northern boundary, is that the nature and the character of the homes changes. And some community members, I mean, some planning commission members said it changed further south, but there seemed to be a consensus on it was a more dramatic change. So that's why I do it there.
Kevin, it's also where your sidewalk stops, both sides. I agree with the 27 and pass Covert, they have a different feel to them already.
As you know, if, you know, six months from now, if this is done, if you realize, you know what, maybe we should have gone further north, you know, you certainly could do that. But that was the rationale for time. So I had planned to end this with our schedule, but I think our schedule has changed now based on today. But I want to thank all of you, please don't hesitate to reach out if you have something tomorrow, or I could use you about something more in the morning, or in the evening. Let me know, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. You're very welcome. Seriously, I know what you've had to hear from everybody, residents, toughest planning zoning for a year and a half. I think you came up with some things that I certainly appreciate, additions to...
Thank you very much.
I know it hasn't been... It's very passionate, so.
Thank you.
Pleasure to serve. All the papers, say aye?
Aye, aye.
Thank you. Everybody read this by next week.